Okay, we'll go ahead and call to order a work session of the planning commission for the town of Superior. Do we have to do roll or anything, fellas? We just launch right into it, huh? Okay. Well, thank you all for coming. This isn't a normal meeting for us where it's just a work session, just an informal thing, so we don't have an agenda other than the one item which is discussion of the Northwest, Northwest Superior sub-area plan. Unless anybody has any strong feelings, if there are folks from the audience who want to talk now, you certainly can, otherwise you're certainly welcome to stick around. And we just kind of have at it when we're doing a work session. And if you all want to sound off on some of this stuff, that's perfectly fine, I think.
I just moved here a couple of weeks ago, thought I'd come check it out.
Okay. Where do you live?
Highlands Ridge, is that what it's called? The ridge at...
Oh, right up here.
Up at the top.
And the townhomes there? Yeah, yeah, nice.
Happy to be here.
Oh, welcome to Superior.
Thanks.
Yeah, good to have you.
And if I could interject, if I could have your name and...
My name is John, John Shalow.
Hi, John.
Hi.
Good to meet you, John. Well, Bob, you've been kind of leading the charge for us on this. Do you have any direction on how you'd like to go tonight?
Oh, well, I was hoping we could talk about some of the things that, well, Lisa said, thank you for pulling that together and that Stephen put before us. And I was hoping we could just brainstorm, you know, some ideas around development standards and building codes, just so we have something to think about, you know, what our options are in the area. I also don't want to limit it to original town. I mean, we're talking about Northwest Superior and the impacts of things like the transit-oriented development, RTD, and, you know, potential development behind Costco and as well as Ian Phil and Original Town, multifamily and all that. So, all that's sort of up for discussion. And I was hoping that maybe towards the end, we could talk about what a public engagement meeting would look like, if we want to try to do that at the next planning commission meeting, where we just kind of decide to sit around and try to get many residents together as we can to find out what they're thinking about this area. Hearing more and more concerns or, you know, just interest in the area, seems like the more you talk about it, the more people speak up and share their thoughts. So, Bob borders that multifamily development, or that multifamily zoned area, so he's obviously interested in what could happen there and, you know, what Fifth Street could look like, if anything. And so, I guess, you know, I'm, you know, one of the big things we were concerned about was, you know, ending up with a town full of massive homes, similar to what's in the Maple Street complex. So, I was hoping we could talk about what options we have there. And then some other things that got thrown out at our last meeting were, you know, what do we think about the general rules, you know, the idea of can somebody put a carriage house on their property and rent it out, you know, what, how tight, how loose do people want that area to be? Do we want to try to encourage the eclectic look and feel? I was talking to my backyard neighbor today, stopped in to talk to me about something, and he just likes how everything's really different, you know, that it's not, that, you know, every home is exactly the same. He just like, really enjoys the eclectic nature of that neighborhood. And are there ways that we can encourage that through development standards, recommendations? I just would like to understand how we could, I'd say enforce or put rules in place, but, you know, combination of encouraging people to build in the area in a way that enhances the look and feel of the homes that are there, that kind of thing.
One quick thing, and we had put together a spreadsheet to work off of, and if anyone in the audience would like to see that, we could be happy to share, or Stephen could pull it up, maybe. But just wanted to note one thing, in the Louisville regulations, I inadvertently forgot the RM standards at the bottom there. And really, the only difference for their development standards, when I say development standards, I mean like setbacks, lot coverage, thing like that, those don't change. The only difference between RL and RM is you can have multifamily in the RM, and you need a minimum lot area of 3,500 square feet. So, from a, how the lot feels, it doesn't change, the size of the structure necessarily doesn't really change, but you can have two units in some parts of downtown Louisville. So...
So, you just left that off?
I forgot, yeah.
That's just not on here?
Yeah, I just forgot to put it on the spreadsheet when I...
Okay.
Getting toward the end there, closed it too early. Just in my observations on this, though, I mean, I think Superior, you know, is kind of right. When we're looking at our neighboring communities, we're not, we're not that different from what the other development standards are, I would say, with, you know, kind of across the board. Obviously, you see some variability. I did notice we're relatively low on density, you know, really compared to all of our neighboring communities, we probably have the lowest, other than maybe Erie's single family. And then lot coverage, you know, we're certainly on the high side, but there's not a lot of variability there, anywhere between 30 and 40 percent. Front setback's pretty consistent. I think you could argue for Superior 20 feet might be fine, given a lot of the existing conditions out there with some reduced setbacks. Again, you know, we're not that far off. I think height might be one area, I think from, again, we're certainly not the highest, but we're maybe on the higher end. But also recognizing communities measure height differently. Some communities measure it to the very tippy top of the roof. Some of these communities measure it to the midpoint of a pitched roof. Some of them measure grade differently. So, you don't always necessarily have all of the complete picture on height when you look just at a straight number, or there's usually a little bit more to it. But I didn't know if after looking at these, how you all feel about kind of where Superior landed, if this is what you expected or not? And then maybe which way we'd want to go on some of these?
And I, you know, I'm familiar with all of these. And the interesting thing, though, is that none of these homes were built to this, you know, nothing in original, well, not nothing, but very few homes in original town were built to this. I don't know what the standards were 50 or 100 years ago, if there were any, right? So, now we're, we're in this weird place where, you know, you've got a development that was built to some, I won't say a standard, but to a style of development from 100 years ago. And now it just is, it's a, it's a complete flip-flop from what you're allowed to do today without consideration to what was there already. And that's, and that's what I'm hoping we can reconcile, because it just seems odd that, you know, you have this neighborhood of single-story, 800 to 2,000 square foot, and those bigger ones are ones people have added on to, or some infill, a little bit of infill that got done. And now all of a sudden, you have the right, because we grabbed Colorado, I assume this probably originally came from Colorado State code.
Probably just got copied from some other municipality, yeah.
From somewhere, right, that doesn't match anything that's in this neighborhood. So, yeah, so this is good to see, it's kind of, and it's good to see, I mean Lafayette was interesting, right? They have lower, a lower height limit, less lot coverage. But, yeah, this is what I expected, but it doesn't jive, right? It doesn't reconcile with what's, what the neighborhood is, right? It's like night and day, so. So, where we go from there, I don't know. That's, you know, that's, I think identifying that today and finding out what our options are and whether things make sense, so that we can talk to residents and find out if people want to be able to put this site, this size of home, you know, in their lots in original town and, you know, cash out and go? Or, you know, do people want to try to maintain some of the character that exists in town?
One of the handouts was, I mean, I think there's a different range that you could do. So, you could do like the bulk plane thing, like Wheat Ridge has, so that you're minimizing some of that, you know, kind of oppressive feeling potentially on some of your neighbors. There was a, there was a handout that, you know, illustrated how you did that. Some communities go so far, and none of these communities do that. And this is where it gets, you know, rather complex pretty quickly, where you start to look at, okay, well, the adjacent property is this tall, therefore, you know, you can go, you know, no taller than this, or you can go another 10 feet. I mean, I guess I don't know how you want to proceed, given, you know, you're not necessarily satisfied with this, but...
Oh, and I'm not claiming satisfied or dissatisfied. It just is, it, it, it's not what that town, that's not what that neighborhood was built to, right? It's not, it was put in place long after that neighborhood was long done, right? So, I'd like to, you know, again, I think the meeting with residents is probably the most important, you know, do we want to try to adjust these in such a way that it's a little more challenging to put in a rectangle, two-story rectangular 4,000 square foot home in there? Or not, right, you know, but again, talking to residents to see. There were also discussions of, you know, you look at these setbacks, and I look at and go, okay, well, I've got an 18-foot setback, right?
So, you're done?
And, yeah, it's like, I mean, I did an addition, but it had to be 20, it had to be seven foot farther back when it was added to the house. Do we want to look at ways to allow people to do additions and expansions and, to their homes within the standards that they built to, you know, to some degree, whatever, you know, something reasonable 100 years ago, right?
Some communities, I think, with respect to that, like you can build in line with a non-conforming setback, you can't increase a non-conforming setback. So, say you get the front of your house, your setback's 25 feet, the front of your house is at 20, you know, you can...
You're allowed to build a 20.
You can build an addition at 20.
Right, right.
You know, you can't build an addition at, you know, 17.
Sure.
But, so I think maybe some provisions like that could be reasonable.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's probably a desire in town to do something. People are doing things, I can't tell whether they're to code or not. I look at some of the things that are happening and, you know, you're like, really? Are you, we were, that was allowed to happen? But, so I think, you know, that, yeah, as far as how to proceed, I think just understanding what our, what our options are with the code, or, and I'd like to hear maybe from Stephen, what he thinks, some of our, what, you know, possibilities, he knows he's learning more and more about our town, and what things we might be able to do.
I mean, there's a number of things. It kind of depends on, and I guess that's kind of why last, last meeting, you know, the direction, you know? So, there's a number of tools that are in play, and, you know, Lisa mentioned one of them, in the bulk plane kind of restriction. But I made a few PowerPoint slides, just to kind of give everyone some context as far as what's allowed in each zone district. So, this is the residential low-density, and this is the 7,000 square foot lot. That's the minimum lot size required, and they're all 50 feet. That's the, what was platted, and that's also the minimum requirement within original town. So, you have your 25-foot setback, and you have your 5-foot minimum side setbacks, and you've got a 20-foot rear setback that allows 3,800 square feet of developable area on that lot.
But that's more than 40 percent lot coverage.
Right, so, I mean, I'm just saying, just by straight zoning, that's what those setbacks allow. So, you'd have to come back and figure out what the, and right now, that would allow 54 percent. So, they'd get a 14 percent reduction on that somewhere that would have to give. But just as a basic analysis of what your setbacks allow versus what medium-density zoning allows, and it actually reduces it quite a bit. So, instead of having 3,800 square feet of kind of developable area or footprint to work with, you got 2,250. And that's, you know, based largely on the fact that there's 10-foot side setbacks. And, and restriction on the lot size can actually be all the way down to 6,000 square feet. So, if you looked at Lisa's PowerPoint, or the, there was only one duplex distinguishing lot, I thought, and it actually goes up in size. So, Wheat Ridge, if you're going to have a duplex, you need a larger lot. Ours, you can actually have a smaller lot and have a duplex. So, it's those types of like possible inconsistencies that kind of come out when you start looking at these numbers just a little bit differently. The other thing that I don't think necessarily makes sense is you have a minimum lot width of 50 feet, and then, so the only thing that can actually give is your lot depth. And if you change your lot depth, and we're changing the alignment of alleys, and so whether or not, I mean, if it's somewhere separate in original town and not really connected to the network, then maybe that works. But otherwise, you're not going to get a wider alley, you're going to have alleys and blocks that don't align with one another. So, I think it's just an unintended consequence of the way that the zoning's kind of, and it kind of plays to your, or backs up your same point, is that these zoning standards were applied to an area that, you know, maybe without a ton of thought, you know, like in, in terms of how would that actually work if somebody came and replatted a certain area? We would have an alley that didn't align with another alley. And I don't think that that's good planning either. So, but kind of getting to a few of the other ones, this is just this illustration of, you know, what the bulk plane analysis would yield, because there is nothing else. There's nothing that tells you that you got a 32-foot height limit, but you don't have to have a certain roof pitch or anything like that. You could build the square box out there, and, and that's what you get. This is medium-density, so the medium-density is actually less impactful than single-family because of the setback differentiation. So, I mean...
So, you could truly build, not that you'd build a flat roof, I mean, people have, but you could literally build a 32-foot-high rectangle with a flat roof, right?
I mean, that's more or less, yeah.
I think you would.
I mean, yeah, there's nothing that tells you that you need to, there's a bunch of different like techniques and different other, you know, kind of requirements that other codes have that tell you that you can't have, you know, more than, I mean, for instance, in the town center, you know, there's the objective to try to get people to build to the lot line, or, you know, to get a sense of enclosure and have that kind of consistency you see in, like on Pearl Street or something like that for our downtown area. And there's a provision to allow, I think it's a 30 percent relief from that standard, so that it's not all just this one wall. And you wouldn't want, you know, the, you know, you wouldn't want everyone built five foot from the side lot line at 32 feet necessarily, because that does have impacts on, you know, adjacent property owners, even solar access, and how much they're actually, you know, shading the yard or whatever. But it also doesn't look congruous if you have a single-family home on one side and you have a 32-foot home, you know, that's 32 feet for 40, you know, 40 feet wide and 32 feet tall all the way across. So, so, I mean, I just started doing some things, just so people can get their head around what, you know, what's required or, and what's not, and what your options are. But to really give you, you know, like advice on what you need to do, I mean, I think it's more about your guys' opinion on what you want to achieve, and then I can help you with tools and, you know, how we can get there. Like the, you know, if you, you noted right away that, you know, it's not 54 percent, you have a 40 percent lot coverage. So, this would get reduced one way or the other, but we don't really have a, and then there's an open space requirement, too, but it's, I think it's 40 or 45 percent. It's not, it's not going to change that necessarily, it's the lot coverage requirement that would change it.
And it's only, part of this can be addressed through other documents, too, like the comprehensive plan, right? Or not?
No, I would say no, not when you're reviewing a building permit, right?
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I think the development standards are, comprehensive plan's more like long-range kind of vision for the future. The zoning code, if you want something like more immediate, then we would need to revisit the zoning code and see what the, what changes, you know, folks are suggesting be made.
We could also, so right now, I understand that if, you don't have to come forward with any kind of development plan unless you are doing six lots?
Sounds right, yeah. I mean, they're, they're different, there's a site plan, I think it's required for anything over two acres. There's a different requirement within the code that tells you that if you're developing either six lots or two acres, then these certain stand, like density standards apply. And there's like another layer to the actual zoning, which is, I think would even apply as a by-right use.
So, that's a tool we could use as well, right? I mean, the only place affected by that is original town, so...
Yeah, so when you say a tool, are you thinking like you'd like to reduce?
Reduce that, yeah, so that we don't have, end up with five identical homes right next to each other down a block because somebody bought those lots up. I mean, there's places where you've got multiple lots blocked up, you can go buy five, buy five lots, and boom, build, build five more Maple Street homes. And that's not protecting the character, that's not, that, you know, that's just not the intent.
So, I guess I'd come back to that and ask, do you want architectural standards, then?
I've, I'm learning, so possibly, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
I mean, architectural standards, I mean, I like the, I mean, the idea that somebody doesn't have to come to the town when they're, if they are going to build five homes on lots, seems really concerning to me for a little neighborhood that has whatever we have, 100, 100 and some odd lots, right? I get it, big old town, and, you know, you've got to be a little, you've got, and you're trying to grow, and you're trying to create neighborhoods. We're not trying to do that. We have our neighborhoods, we're, we're trying to prevent them from getting overwritten by, you know, massive home developments coming. I mean, somebody could come along Coal Creek Drive and buy, you know, buy, you know, buy our block and a couple in another home on another block, and boom, build five more, just build five at a time, right? They could just build five Maple Street homes.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, like, from...
Boom, 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 six months after, six months after, six months. And it just, that, that's bothersome to me. It seemed like, if you're going to build more than a home, you know, if you're coming in as a developer and you're going to build more than a home, then you need to, oh, just you need to come to us, you need to come to the town and have it looked at, right? I don't know that we need to make it a, you know, an insane process, but it would seem like the developers are going to come in here and start buying up lots in original town, we need to put some guidelines around that.
I would argue the flip side from my perspective. I would rather develop quality standards that are high-quality, that are sensitive to the context, that we can more uniformly apply, so that there is some assurance for property owners that they know what they're going to, that, and for, not, not necessarily saying I'm pro-developer here, but I'm thinking an alternate would be to develop, you know, good development standards. Because if not, then I think we start regulating architecture. And I don't know that, I want to have the ability to say, you know, you only get a one-story house, but you can have a two-story house, and you can have a flat roof, and you, I don't know, I'm thinking out loud a lot.
No, 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 that's cool, that's what I'm hoping we're doing, yeah, yeah, you know, that's fair.
I'm not trying to be contrary here, but I'm wondering, you know, is, what standard are we like trying to apply, then? Because it feels maybe a little arbitrary if somebody's coming to us with five lots and we don't have good standards in place now, what standard are we holding them to?
And honestly, I don't know. I mean, I'm not, I'm not a planner. I'm trying to speak in terms of the impact that this neighborhood...
Yeah.
...faces with the existing code. So, I'm probably much more interested in what could happen, so that we can talk about how to prevent it, right?
And I would also, yeah...
And what tools we use, I don't know. I mean, that one came to mind because somebody came over here, been built five homes, almost identical, right down the block, right?
And I can't say that Maple...
And we'd like to not see that again.
But I can't say that Maple would be, Maple's probably not great, even if it's the only house on a block that everything else is little, right?
No, I agree, I, I agree. But still, you know, you, I agree with you, you don't want to, I mean, if, you know, if somebody wants to buy a lot and put a bigger home on it, I, I struggle with having a problem with that. I mean, I guess the guy with the 750-square-foot home next door might be concerned, but, you know, you can't, yeah, you can't draw, I, I, you can't draw that line to say you can't, but we can reduce the amount of house that goes on there. We can put some roof pitches in place, and we can, you know, help, help keep that from being a 5,000-square-foot home and almost force it down to being whatever we decide the maximum is, whether it's 2,000, 3,000, whatever we think. We can probably create standards to force a home that's on one of these lots to not be any bigger than X. But I'm concerned about developers coming in here, this land is valuable, and they want to come in and buy up lots.
And I'm not saying I don't think that we maybe shouldn't look at the minimum size, but I, I don't want to assume that that solves the problem. I think that there's some problems on this.
Oh, yeah, no, I'd like to solve the problem, but, yeah, I, yeah.
Bob, in your discussions with members of the community who are in this, in the Northwest area, I mean, is that, is that the commonly shared theme that you hear coming through that, you know, we don't want to see, you know, these great laws?
I don't want to speak for the entire neighborhood, but, yeah, the folks, the folks, you know, there's a dozen or so folks that I've talked to that they love the, they love the neighborhood, they love the feel of the neighborhood. And when we saw those Maple Street homes come in, there was like, holy crap, what just happened, right? And so, there is, but I don't know what everybody's thinking. I mean, that's why I'd like to have the meeting next week to, I'd like to know what our options are. That's what I was hoping to do today, get educated and, you know, what are some things we can talk about with the public as, you know, and if they come in and say, yeah, we want to let anybody do whatever they want, and that's what the consensus is, then maybe we're done, and it's all over. But, you know, but I don't think that's what we're going to see, I don't think that's what we're going to define.
What are you, what are you hearing so far in terms of concerns about multifamily housing as opposed to large, single-family housing?
Not a whole lot, because I don't think many people understand that there's an entire block of multifamily-zoned land sitting next to them, to be honest with you. And that's another thing I want to get communicated and out to everyone. I think the, the folks on Coal Creek Crossing, so I've, a couple that I've talked to know that they could be backing up to, you know, medium-density residential zoning. And, you know, they're, the traffic is a big concern, a lot of, you know, the people who are on Coal Creek are dealing with it now, but you throw multifamily in between Fourth and Fifth, and now all of a sudden, Williams and Charles are dealing with it. When you put Rogers Farm over here, and you put whatever that number is going to be, 107, 100, I don't remember what the, there've been various numbers, 100, over 100 homes in there. Now, the, the south side of the creek is going to be impacted, and that's going to change the way, you know, that's going to change life over there. So, there are concerns about cut-through traffic and, you know, it's density, I think is probably, and all the impacts of density and how that's going to impact people's life, right?
What are you hearing about, any concerns around enforcement and inconsistent enforcement?
I'm not, you know, that's why my neighbor came over today. He asked, he said, I just got a code letter. Have you gotten, have you gotten a letter from anybody about the weeds in your back? Like, no, I haven't, you know, we, and I, so I don't know, I guess the couple people, and it's only a couple that I've heard from that have gotten letters regarding code enforcement feel like it's inconsistent, right? And I'd love to know more, I think all of us would like to know exactly what, he didn't know what to expect, he didn't know what the expectations were. You know, why are my weeds over here a problem, but that guy over there, weeds aren't a problem, you know? And so, there's a, there's just a question of people knowing what's, what's expected of them. That was his concern today, is I don't know what's expected of me, I don't know what's okay. It didn't come and say your weeds only can be six inches, or you can't have weeds, you have to have something else, right? Which that would be crazy, because Old Town's got weeds everywhere. I mean, that's, they're up and down the alleys, and they were in the alley.
Yeah.
Which you look at and go, wait a minute, isn't that town? How did, how did I, as a resident, get responsible for the, for the weeds outside my fence line, right? All right, so, so, yes, there is, yeah, there's questions about code enforcement.
I suppose just, just thinking out loud about it, and trying to put myself in the shoes of a, of a resident there, I mean, I could see where folks might come down on different sides of the issue. You know, there might be some who are thinking, hey, this is great, you know, I'm sitting on a, I'm sitting on a lot here that is probably worth a lot of money to a developer, and I'm okay with selling it to the highest bidder and doing something else. I suppose, you know, I would probably fall on the other side, I would probably fall on the side of, I want to keep a small-town feel and, you know, introduce some sanity to the, what the, what the neighborhood might look like. what the, what the neighborhood might look like, but, um.
There's a mix, people are, people are, I mean, you don't see anything go for sale, it doesn't go for sale, people just, and when it does, it's gone like that, you know? In our chamber, Director Heather bought, just bought a cute little old home on, right there across from where Rogers Farm, you know, people, I mean, people are looking for these types of things, they're very rare, you know? But you're right, I, I suspect there's gotta be a group of people out there that just wanna, you know.
Yeah, I, I guess that's just my two cents worth, is I, I'd like to do what we can to try to listen to the community.
Right.
As a whole, kinda try to get, gauge where people are landing on those things. I mean, I certainly think there's probably consensus on, we don't wanna see big commercial enterprises in, in the middle of, uh, original town. We don't wanna see that type of thing going on, and we don't, there probably is some consensus around not wanting to see a lot of multifamily development, I would imagine, just from a density standpoint. But maybe not, and.
Right, yeah.
I mean, I'd love to hear from the community and what, what folks are thinking, and, and, and it would be helpful to kinda get an understanding for my benefit as to what, what tools does the planning commission have to, you know, try to advance the ball once we have a sense of sort of what the community's wishes are? And I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Well, that's what I was hoping for today, right, for us to figure out as many questions as we have, to learn what we, what we have, the way things are, what's owned the way it is. I mean, and I sent out an email to folks around town to come listen so they could, and I, probably be good to bring the zoning map up at some point too. You know, so, so people can see what the zoning is, just, you know, so we can start thinking about it and be prepared to have a, you know, a meeting with everybody and find out what they're thinking. 'Cause I, I mean, I know, you know, I've heard people in the audience that are here now that have said, you know, it, there's, there's a, there's a freedom in original town, right? We're not under HOA, we don't, you know, as long as things aren't crazy and out of hand, you know, we're generally okay with, with stuff laying around. I mean, there's just a, there's a level, there's a tolerance that's, that's there, but, you know, there's code, and you get people who come in and their tolerance is different, right? And so you may get, depending on who it is, it's, so that, you know, enforcement's been complaint-driven, right? And maybe that's a reasonable way to keep it, you know, that it's complaint-driven, and nobody's going around trying to, you know, play HOA rules and, you know, looking for and identifying every, um, code enforcement violation and writing something up. But if a neighbor's really having a problem with, you know what, this guy, just his weeds go like crazy, and he come over into our lawn, and I can't keep a good grass, so I'm gonna call and ask him to come over and tell him to, you know, do a better job with his weeds, right? So that, but that becomes, you know, if the neighbors can't handle it, then there's a code enforcement officer to handle it. And I think, you know, a lot of people in town want that, right, they wanna, there's something comforting about that, right? I mean, if I'm working on a project, I don't have to make sure I have it done in seven days or fourteen days, right? If I, if I have to leave some materials out there for the summer and I don't get to it till the spring, no, no, you know, most people aren't gonna care, right? But then there, there are other things that are affecting that way of life, these, you know, developer, and we're watching, we're watching developers come in and buy up properties. And there's nervousness about what they're going to do, and we don't have anything, anything to, to lean on except you can build a thirty-two-foot-high rectangle box on a seven thousand-square-foot lot and sell it for eight hundred and fifty thousand to one point two million dollars. That's it, there's nothing to, so, and if, you know, somebody, you know, I mean, I know, you know, we could sit here and say, oh, well, that's great, you can make a fortune. Okay, well then why the hell don't we just go the other way, let's make it ninety percent lot coverage, do whatever the hell you want, and make, you know, two point seven million dollars? And I'd like to hear from the town, if the people in town wanna make two point seven million dollars on their property, we all wanna get the heck out of Dodge? Let's get that out on the table and let's go that direction, right? I'm, I'm as willing to go either, either way, you know, I, I, you're not gonna hear that, but, but that's, you know, right now, we just don't have, you know, we.
You're gonna end up with a mishmash, you're gonna end up.
Well, if you can end up with those developers coming in, building big properties, right?
Next to, next to.
Next to little homes, right.
Mining cabin. I'd sure be interested in hearing thoughts from the rest of you folks on it.
Well, I can only, um, one, one thing I'd draw on is my, my sister lives in a part of LA where at one point in time, uh, the neighborhood was, had a lot of Spanish houses, they were fairly old and so on. Now, this is now moving forward thirty years or forty years, something like that, now everything is being bought for a tear-down and a lot filler, uh, simply because of the location as a whole. In other words, it's near the ocean and ocean temperatures, and so that has become highly desirable, and you know, if a person owns a piece of property and can sell it at a profit, that, you know, that's, that's prerequisite. You buy a house for an investment, it may not evolve the way you imagine, but the point is it can still be sold for a lot more, and, you know, why not? That's why they bought it ultimately.
Anthony, what do you think?
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm still stuck.
One other thought if I could.
Sorry about that.
For me, it's gonna sound a little silly, I, I saw, apologize ahead of time, but it's sort of like, I don't care what they build as long as it looks good. You know, I'm very much, uh, into aesthetics and how it, how it fits, as opposed to hypothetically a lot filler that's just a box like we were talking about.
So, so you'd be okay with your thousand, twelve-hundred-square-foot home on seven thousand-square-foot lot with one, two, three, four homes? Completely eliminating your look of anything?
I would not like that, wouldn't that.
Okay, well, that's what we can have here.
I understand.
You know, there, there are places, yeah.
I understand that, I'm just saying, you know, the, you, my preferences are based on the appeal of it, and, you know, what it looks like and the aesthetics and those kinds of things. But I, but against that, there, there's also the freedom of what an owner can do in terms of selling his property.
Standards of the town.
Correct.
Was built a hundred years ago, and now we have standards that don't apply to what was done, and so that's why that's, you hear the predicament, right, that we're in, so, sorry.
And, uh, no, you're fine, and I hear your frustration too, and I'm sure a lot of your neighbors, um, share that same frustration. However, I'm still, well, maybe, maybe not, that's what I think we need to get past, because where I'm stuck is trying to, um, figure out a determination of where this community wants to be, where this part of our town wants to be. And I'm, I keep getting lost, I mean, do we want to keep the town the way that it is? I mean, do we like the, that part of the town the way that it is? Um, I've heard that a lot of people like the eclectic feel of it, and, um, I, I agree, there's some charm to that. But I'm not hearing that that's what's wanted. I'm also not hearing that it's not, um, desirable to have larger homes on some of the, the lots there, and, um, you know, build larger homes next to a smaller home, so I'm not hearing that either. If we wanna keep it the same, I keep coming back to the question in my mind, why don't we try and just designate this as a historic district? And then maybe at that point, we have more control over what goes in and have more say over that. Because much to Bob's point, if I buy a lot, um, and I don't care where it is, if I wanna build a two-story or a two-and-a-half-story house, as long as it conforms to the, um, code and the zones, uh, I'm gonna build that as an owner, and, um, so I'm just not, I'm just not sure. The, the, so for me, there's still that, that struggle with identity, uh, around this part of the town and getting some clarification of that. Keeping in mind that it just doesn't necessarily affect, affect that part of our town and our community, but it affects our, um, town as a whole, it affects Superior as a whole, and, um, I'd ha- I'd like to have more than a, a handful of people have say as to what happens, you know, there, so that's where I am. I'm, I'm stuck, um, on, you know, what to create there and, um, northwest Superior.
Well, that's what, I mean, so, so the idea was, we had several meetings of which that, in, whether we agree on it or not, but the next one would be to get, get as many neighbors together to start talking about that as, as we can. The intent of this meeting was to make sure we're clear on what, what our options are, what the zoning is, what, you know, more of the technical information. This was an educational meeting for us, and if we don't need it, we don't have any more questions about what can and can't be done here, then, you know, we don't have to keep going. We can actually start to talk about what a public meeting might look like, how we're gonna get the word out, how many people we can get here, what the, you know, what, what, uh, what the format's gonna be, and try to get some sense of that, that's what my, the.
But I do think.
That's the next meeting in my mind, so.
Bob, I hear what you're saying, I do think we need to be clear though, and keeping those issues separate, because there is a lot of spillover from what we're trying to accomplish here, based on what you're saying, as to what I'm hearing. So there's a disconnect, um, for me. Let's figure out what tools we have versus we don't want this house next to this other house, or we don't want a developer to do this. So there's a disconnect, and that, I, I think since we began this discussion, that's kind of where I've been stuck, um, is having that disconnect of, um, what tools do we have, what do residents want, and how we can direct that?
I, I'd like to get to the tools part of it.
Okay.
When we can, Stephen, and maybe ask you some questions, just for my adification, but I'd love to hear from Phyllis, if you have any thoughts. Phyllis, I know you've been a longtime resident, and you, you know, you've, you've lived in this area right here for a long time, and what's your reaction?
I guess, um, borderline, you know, I don't wanna see a lot of big homes, like Bob says, one right after the other. Yet, um, for me, it's if I wanna do something with my house, I don't want the town to say, you can't do that. So I don't know how to go about that, but to have a historic district, unless that, and I'm, I'm wary about a historic district because it, what I understand is that you can't even put in an air conditioner, can't even put in a window, can't put anything in. So I wouldn't want that because that's too restrictive, unless it was structured differently. And I don't know, I don't know the ins and outs of that, but that would be mine. And then I agree that we need just more than a handful of people, this really has to be, you know, put out there and say, you have to come in and say what you want, or you might get what you don't want.
Yeah, I, I agree, uh, Phyllis, you know, I'm just throwing that out, because that is one way to preserve a neighborhood and a community. But it, it, it is very restrictive based on, um, what I've heard and what I've read about historic districts.
I, I don't think there's a whole lot of desire for preservation of the historical homes, I, ma- maybe for some people. Am I my mic on? I, I don't know that there's a strong desire for the preservation of historical homes, I think there's a little bit, I mean, some of us like to protect that because it's neat, but, you know, these are eight hundred-square-foot mining cabins that were built on dirt.
But it's a possible tool that we could throw out.
But it is, yeah, it's, but that's preservation.
But it's a tool.
Sure, that, that's fair.
I mean, you know what I mean, if we're looking for tools right now, then that could be a tool.
I think it was Phil, I'm just trying to back what Phil was saying, yeah.
It's the right tool.
It's a, it's, historical districts are preserv- are generally about preservation. And of, of history, and here, it's a desire to sort of preserve a neighborhood of scale and architecture.
Yeah.
Not even preserve, but to protect, right, and, and, um, yeah, I mean, Phyllis wants to add onto her home or put in an air conditioner, but and I don't think anybody in town wants to be prevented from doing that 'cause they have a historic one, but.
Right, but, yeah.
Right, yeah, so, I, I don't think, but we do, there is a desire to protect the architecture size, um, to some subset of people, that's just why I agree, I, we need to get more people in here to find out what, what, what's being thought about, so.
So how do we do that without diminishing the property rights of others?
I don't, I mean, I don't know if there's an easy answer for you, I mean, so I guess, as a, I'll, I'll give you your direction here in a second, as far as what I can provide, as far as there are a number of tools, and what, what I guess I'm looking for from, from you and what I've heard in past meetings is that we, we wanna hear feedback from the public, but we also need to, uh, focus the conversation, otherwise it's gonna be too big and too broad, and we're not gonna get anywhere. So I think that, you know, I understand, I mean, we, we can, this seems to be a little bit cyclical, we need feedback, we need input, we, we can't move forward without knowing the, kind of the, the sentiment of the folks that actually live here, um, which I think is true. On the other hand, we have to balance that with how do we frame that conversation, and how do we, I mean, I really can't envision right now what a meeting will look like in two weeks without, uh, you know, something focused, unless we have like, you know, six questions we wanna ask and get some feedback on, or something, you know, that kind of focuses everything. You know, toward that, you know, mo- other end, as far as what planning commission can do, you know, it's the same type of exercise, except more complicated, 'cause there's gonna be a lot more probably, uh, folks involved than, um, as what we, what we've made recommendations for, for McCaslin, you know, as far as traffic calming. You know, we put a recommendation together, we take it to the board, you know, in this case, the board's wanting to meet in August and have, uh, another kind of work session, conversation about what those recommendations are, and then we see where it kind of goes from there, as to whether or not, you know, all of those things get adopted, a few of them get adopted, and then how budget kind of trickles down from there, 'cause there's layers of, you know, elements to that. For this, I mean, you know, one of the things that we've discussed as well was, you know, hiring a consultant, um, and, you know, having that person, you know, that, I mean, these are difficult things to try to achieve as a planning commission, so maybe a consultant would be a good thing in order to facilitate conversations. Uh, but it also would be probably helpful to have somebody look at this, uh, as far as, well, what do we have here? You know, we've discussed that, you know, s- I don't know how many lots, you can kind of see from just the shapes of these lots, what's being shown is not a consistent, uh, fabric, it's being, so you have, I don't know if I've got a pointer or not, I'll use the mouse, it turns out better, anyway, but, so you have a, a lot that's like this size versus this is the, the platted lot, so that's fifty by a hundred and forty. This is at least two lots, if not three lots, and that's just combined ownership, doesn't mean that that particular property owner couldn't come back in and develop on each of those lots that he or she owns, it just means that currently that's, um, developed as one lot and in one ownership. So similar to what we have, uh, all along, uh, Coal Creek up here, and then some bigger, you know, pieces. But what do we actually have? I mean, I think that assessment would be kind of interesting, do we have, you know, two hundred and fifty-seven lots and, you know, only a hundred and eighty homes that are built over those lots? And, you know, twenty percent that are built on two lots, and fifteen percent that are built on three, and, you know, the majority that are built on one? And then what are the sizes of those homes, you know, like what is the actual character of original town? What, what range do we have? One of the tools that Boulder County uses in order to kind of control development, and it came in as a part of, I think they had like the average, uh, and I can't remember what year, but I think it was like the late nineties, the average home size was exceeding like six or seven thousand square feet. And so one of the tools they used was a, um, I'm gonna remember the acronym, but I'm not gonna remember the, uh, the actual words, but, uh, basically what they did was they draw a boundary around that lot, and they do an assessment of how big the houses are within that area, and you can't exceed a certain percentage above what that average, um, the median house size is for that neighborhood. And it's really not neighborhoods in Boulder County, we're talking about acres and acres of land, so, uh, depending on how dense that area of the county has developed, then, you know, you may grab seven lots, or you may grab a hundred lots and figure out what, um, the average house size. But what that really did was temper the, um, you know, it didn't, it kind of controlled the growth, so I mean, you could do the same type of thing, like, you know, you're not gonna, but effectively what it kind of did was, you know, you're not gonna jump from, you know, an average house size of four thousand square feet to an average house size of eight thousand square feet immediately, you're gonna grow incrementally. And, you know, and I think that's, it was, it was a pretty decent solution to, to a, a problem on a much bigger scale, and a little bit different, but the same type of objective that you guys are trying to kind of control is that we don't go from an average house size of fifteen hundred square feet to an average house size of six thousand square feet, or, I don't, I think the Maple Homes are somewhere in the three thousands, but it's still maybe twice the house size of what, what we have in original town, so. There's a number of different tools, there's form-based codes that kind of help control, you know, like if you're, you know, if a house is adjacent to a single-story house, that there's some element that's at that level before it goes up to the two-story or something like that. And if I remember correctly, one of the codes that I saw that addressed that well was, um, in Aspen, or in Monument or one of the towns around Aspen. But, uh, I, I mean, we can dig into that further, I mean, and, and I think that's kind of where like illustrations help, you know, is this, you know, a lot of these, a lot of these municipalities have had these studies done, so that doesn't mean that you have to go and, and one option would be hiring a, um, a consultant to do the work and reinvent the wheel, and one option would be to look and see what other municipalities have done, and see what elements and tools we feel like are, uh, applicable to Superior, so. Does that help or give you some direction?
It does, I'm, I'm sitting here wishing I'd paid more attention to my Property Two class in law school, because I, you know, I'm just trying to visualize, so, you know, let's, just hypothetically, let's assume that we go through a, a community outreach. let's assume that we go through a community outreach program, we get a lot of good feedback, and let's just assume for the sake of discussion that the vast majority of the folks in this area come back and say, "You know what? We want to see the house sizes no greater than 1,500 square feet and we want to see the height no greater than 32 feet with, you know, some sort of breakup of the walls." Can we do that? Can we, can we move the ball forward and say, "Okay, from this point forward, that's going to be the law of the land." And if we do that, is that a taking of the property rights of the people who, what if you have a guy sitting on the corner saying, "Wait a minute, I just had my lot for sale to a developer who wants to put in, you know, a monstrosity and this has scuttled my deal." I mean, do we?
I think we have a reasonable ability to do so and you need to find public benefit. I mean, there's findings or there should be criteria in our ordinance, you know, for changing standards and changing that you need to justify, you need to go through, that's the reason for the public process too, right? This is the reason why we notice and they would get mailings and they'd have the opportunity to come speak. Where the fine line is with taking, you know, maybe Kendra weighs in. I also have some concern just based on, you know, typically if a community does this, they'll do this kind of on a community-wide basis where it's, you know, like Boulder County, right? It's applied through the whole county. So, you know, this is where, you know, we can identify, you know, the very few specific properties here that we're affecting, and I don't know if the size plays into it from a legal perspective, from like a legislative zone, you know, it's like, this is like a legislative rezoning action.
Well, it's, I mean, technically rezoning is a different question. We're talking about code updates.
Not, sorry, not rezoning, but yeah, to adjust the zoning code, right? Like a legislative action we can do.
Yeah, and Hillary or Kendra would be better to answer like the, and we can either, you know, jot these notes down and we can relate them to her, or, you know, we can have her, if there's enough questions, have her attend another meeting that we can kind of flesh all that out. But, I mean, I think you certainly can make recommendations to the board, the board will have to make a decision, we'll have to review what, I mean, I think if it's a, we'll probably take it to Planning Commission as these are the recommendations, you're making the recommendations to them, so I think it'd probably just go to the board and the board would, if we were doing a staff code update, it would come to you to review it if it was extensive enough and then it would come, go to the board. I think Lisa did one when she was here, so it would follow that type of process. And I don't know that, I mean, I don't know where that line for a taking would be. I mean, certainly it's if you don't have a property, right, or there's nothing there anymore, like for you to actually develop, but for you to reduce like, or put a new layer, I mean, certainly Boulder County did it to clarify what.
So the vehicle would be a code update?
The vehicle would be a code update for, for development standards if you wanted to add another layer or different development standards or, you know, a square footage maximum or something like that, that would be a code update. If you're talking about, you know, you don't think that the residential medium density zone is appropriate and then it should be low-density residential, that's a rezoning. So that's two different mechanisms or whatever.
You also could frame it so that it gets phased in over time, or we do hear from a large crowd that, you know what, hey, whoa, 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 this isn't fair, you know, and you want to respect that, you can say, "Well, you have two years and then this happens." Or, I mean, I think there's a lot of different ways.
All right.
If that's what we hear, that people aren't all in kind of agreement on it.
Yeah. And then as we, as we get through that, let's assume we get to that point and we think, yeah, we need, if we should make these code modifications, this would address what we're hearing from the public that they would like to see. I take it then we work through with, with our town attorney on what can we or can't we do before we make recommendations to the board?
Yeah, I mean, she would certainly attend that meeting or whatever so that we're comfortable with what recommendations we're making and whether or not anything is, you know, an overreach or anything like that.
Okay. Well, I'm, I guess I'm in agreement with everybody that community outreach is going to be critical in trying to manage the process so that we, we can kind of define what it is we're asking for input on versus simply flinging the doors open and, you know, having open mic night, that might be a little bit hard.
There are a couple of other areas I wouldn't mind touching on today just from an educational standpoint since we have some folks here and maybe some folks are watching. We've been talking about single-family infill development, but I think it's, I mean, I do want to point out that, you know, we do have, so we have Rogers Farm, which is medium-density residential across from the south side. We have medium-density residential that sits between original town and Coal Creek Crossing, medium-density residential, kind of the cuffer property that's just to the west of the small storage facility that's up there. And we have this industrial, light industrial zoning, which I know people are interested, we've touched on it a little bit, you know, what can you do with light industrial zoning in the middle, in the middle of a residential neighborhood? Stephen, if I, what might be good, just if you wouldn't mind recapping, you know, medium density residential for us, looking at this, looks like we can put eight units per acre. Is that what I've got here? Single-family, duplex and multifamily, is that what, that's the second line in our spreadsheet? That's what can be done here, right?
That's, yeah, I mean, there's, as you mentioned earlier too, there's the, so I think there's, I want to double check if there's six or, I think it's six lots to the each block, is that correct? Before you?
There are six lots in each, one, two, three.
On each side of the alley, right?
Oh, yes, yeah.
So the six lots in and of themselves would constitute the, and it's not necessarily that you go to a site development plan. So site development plan for light industrial is required kind of regardless. For medium-density residential, if it's a duplex or it's a single-family home, your general development standards, it's kind of a different layer besides what you see in the spreadsheet would apply as well. So anything over two acres or six lots, you have to meet the general development standards as well, and there are certain setbacks for, you know, separation between uses, that type of stuff. I haven't really familiarized myself with that because there hasn't been an application that qualifies for it, but I'm happy to look through that and give you guys a summary of that as well for the next meeting. But essentially, medium-density residential, as we've seen it so far, based on the lot requirements and the development requirements, you're either going to get, you know, maybe a very small triplex on a individual lot, a 6,000 square foot lot, or you're going to more likely get a duplex.
Like a duplex.
And a duplex is something that's a by right development.
Okay.
Versus you actually go through a site development plan for multifamily or like an industrial or commercial type of zone. So this is the medium-density residential, and as you see, like the, this is how this is helpful and illustrative, you get 2,250 square feet of developable area. So, I mean, even if there were two lots or two units on this property, the ground level's 1,100 square feet, you have a two-car garage that takes up, you know, 400 or 300 square feet, you're not going to get a ton of square footage out of, you know, two-story structure. You may have 2,250 square feet or, you know, something per unit, but it's not going to be that big. So if you were to, you know, take that and try to get a triplex off of it, then you're actually getting smaller and smaller units. So the market, I don't think it's dictated, at least thus far, anyone coming in and trying to get a triplex out on one of these lots, so. But technically, they're plotted at 7,000 square feet, so they'd have a little bit more room if they didn't want to replat. RM standards require the 6,000 square feet, but everything that's platted that's in original town is done on the 50 by 140, 7,000 square foot lots, so.
And the eight units per acre only comes into play if you're developing multiple lots, right? Like, so if people came in individually and applied for triplexes, you could result in greater than?
Correct.
Eight units per acre.
That's a good point. So the eight units per acre is another one of those kind of layers that comes in if you're six units or more or two acres or more.
Okay.
Otherwise, you'd just have to do the math to see how many, and it could be, theoretically be more, so.
So in general, and this is just for people who are listening, the resident, medium-density residential, we're looking at duplexes or townhomes, not big apartment buildings or anything like that, it's medium-density, so it's?
I mean, theoretically, they could come in for multi-family apartment or something like that, but it would have to be a site, it wouldn't be a by right, like where it just goes to the building department or anything like that. It would be a public meeting that we discuss a site development plan, so.
Okay. And the light industrial, the likelihood of an application fitting that small of an area is, I mean, we've, we've struggled to come up with one.
Yeah, it's hard to say, and I wouldn't, I mean, I wouldn't want to venture as to what could be done and couldn't be done. Those, again, we haven't had any light industrial development standards and how planning really works. I mean, I could read the code and it would make a certain amount of sense to me, why have to go and apply the code? And that's when you really get into like, well, I mean, even here, like, well, that doesn't make sense, we got a 6,000 square foot lot and now we have alleys that don't align with one another, that wasn't an intended consequence. But once you start applying it, you kind of see these holes in, in certain things, so. And that's what happened there. But I imagine there's some possibility for industrial development, which isn't always, I mean, light industrial development's a little bit of a misnomer, I mean, it allows some commercial type of uses in there too, so it's very possible that some office uses or something like that could be put in there, you know, without it being technically light industrial. Or like what people think of when you're thinking like a storage yard or some sort of, you know, research and development facility or something, even like more manufacturing or something like that. That kind of is what I conjure up when I'm thinking light industrial, not like a general office building or something like that, so.
Okay. So in addressing those too, I mean, we need to look at those. It just, having a light industrial plot right in the middle of this doesn't make sense, right? And, you know, that's another area that I think just, you know, needs to be talked about and, you know, understood by the folks that we have get to come together so they can, you know, talk about this, so.
I think it'd be great to hear, I'm just, I think philosophically, when it comes to the RM and the IL zones, as a planning commissioner, I would have to hear a lot from the community to hear justification to, you know, for us to initiate some sort of action on changing, you know, the ability for the RM zones to build multifamily development. And, you know, if an applicant comes forward and requests a zone change, I think that's different, but.
Agreed.
I don't know, I'm just not comfortable, you know, assuming that we have the ability to communicate even to the public necessarily that, that those are going to change anytime soon unless the owners ask. I don't know, unless you guys disagree.
I guess my personal view is if there, if there was an absolute ground swell of, you know, of movement, that, you know, this is an aberration, and I'm not trying to pick on any one property or anybody, but if theoretically if somebody, you know, I mean, if you had the entire community behind the idea that, you know, this is, this was a bad zoning decision, I guess I would advocate that we at least look at what, if anything, can we do in response to that.
Yeah, I don't know, I just look at these two particular instances and they've been there long before, you know, any of us were, for those two, for the two IL zones there. That's just my opinion. I mean, I don't know, I just don't want to give the impression, I think, by asking that question.
I'm not looking to ask the question, I'm looking to educate people so that the community here knows what the zoning is in this area.
Okay.
They should be able to look at this map and know exactly what they bought into.
Yeah.
And you look at this, right?
Not to imply that it's going to change.
I don't want to ask and any, make any implication, I mean, if people look at it, I mean, I mean, it's hard not to look at and go, okay, what can you, what can you put in an industrial light zoning in the middle of a residential neighborhood? So, you know, I'd like people to be educated on what it is and what, what could be done there, and, you know, if they want to stand up and say, "You know what? This doesn't make any sense." I mean, we have a planner and we have a planning commission, our job is good planning and if bad planning was done and it makes sense to correct it, then the discussion should be had. Whether we can do anything is a whole different story.
I think, yeah.
There could be a legal, I mean, it could be, I mean, I, you know, I don't know.
I'd want to know the legal side of those.
And maybe it's a discussion with the landowner, right? I mean, maybe it's just, hey, town staff, can you talk with the landowner about this and see if they'd be willing to do X and what would that look like? I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that anybody's coming in and trying to force change through legislation or, right? I mean, it.
I agree with you, I just want to make sure that that's the, from my perspective, that that's what we're communicating.
Well, again, I think educating people on what it is and letting all of us who live here speak, speak to it and.
I think that's why, that's when we do cross over to the takings issues, if we're talking about rezoning and making it difficult for somebody to continue on with what they're doing, I mean, that's a whole nother.
Oh, yeah.
Level of, of, you know, we would probably have to go through a fight if we were going to do something like that.
My neighbor, I have no interest in changing what he's doing over there, zero zilch. I mean, I just, but someday that, I'm not worried about what's going on there right now at all, I'm happy with it. It's cool, it's a neat part. Somebody comes in here and wants to build an office building, right? Or a mini research facility in the middle of a residential area and they have a right by, used by right to do it, we have a problem, right? That just doesn't make any damn sense, you know? And so, and this property, this area is so valuable, it's being gobbled up, and I'm just wanting to get us to think about this stuff. I want everybody in this neighborhood to know what this is so they can, and again, wherever it goes, I don't care. People like, you know, let it alone, let's, let's just let it be where it's going to go and I'll get my money and move to Louisville, I am absolutely okay with that. But we're hearing just rumblings of all kinds in meetings, in town meetings we come here, there's just all kinds of rumblings and I'm just, you know, I know, I mean, I've been on the planning commission, I've been here long enough, I, I see what's happening, I know what's happening, and to not be proactive and address it with the, with the community and to just let it happen without being proactive, I just feel like it's just not appropriate.
I agree, you're right. When you listen, yeah, when you see light industrial surrounded entirely by residential, that doesn't make.
In all of it, you know, and, and let's, you know, let's move along, I mean, let's get up into Superior Marketplace, let's get into the RTD's potential development to reroute Marshall Road and build apartment buildings and add 1,000 people into this area. This community needs to hear this, they're not seeing those documents. That document is buried somewhere on a website that nobody in this neighborhood is, is looking at. We don't do it, it gets buried. Everything, things just get buried and this stuff just needs to be brought to light so we can just talk about it and be proactive about it, so. And I don't know what all the tools are and I'm not a planner and I'm, but, I mean, I'm been around a long time and I'm smart enough to, to know when there's a problem and I just think we have a problem, you know? And we're just going, in 10 years, we're going to go, crap, you know?
Well, the other thing you can do is just look along the corridor and see what's happening.
Right.
And so I think that if that's not enough to get people engaged and, you know, they need to, I don't know, I don't know.
Then they're going to suffer, you know, they're going to get what other people want.
They need to know that that's coming.
Yeah, yeah. Just, and we have opportunity now and we might even be too late, I don't know, we might be too late to, but.
And we still have to try.
Yeah, and I agree with everything you said, Bob. I mean, I, you know, we're, we're up to the task and, you know, we should, we should play this out and see what we can do. My own personal opinion on that light industrial stuff is that the land values are going to dictate the, the direction that that property takes. It will not be, it's too coveted for residential development to stay light industrial for any length of time. I cannot imagine somebody coming in and saying, "It makes sense for me to pay a boatload of money to put a, a factory in the middle of Superior when there's."
I'm not talking about a factory, I'm talking about a, a one-story office building in the middle of a beautiful, gorgeous area across the street from a park with a view of the Flatirons, or a two-story. I mean, that, right? I mean, the, yeah, I'm not worried about a factory coming in there, we're not going to let a factory come in there, we're not going to let, but what can you do and by right, right? And it would be kind of silly to now be faced with an office building that has parking and now we have traffic coming in and out during the day, you know?
No, I agree.
That's all.
We should have that discussion, we should be looking down the road at what happens, you know, when the current owner is ready to sell and move on and do something else. I think we should be mindful of all that.
We should have those in mind, right? I don't want him to come along and decide he wants to do something and the town hasn't even thought about this, right? We haven't even been prepared for what.
I think that's a comp plan discussion. So as I'm thinking about the tools we have, you know, comp plan is more like future policy, right? So that's kind of the role of the comprehensive plan for us to take a look at, you know what? What direction do we want to go? And so I would think that those two particular properties would be completely appropriate to talk about those as part of this northwest, you know, suburb area plan or whatever we're doing, or if this is an amendment to the comprehensive plan. I think the future of those, really, really ideal for that type of discussion with the community.
Density for this whole area, what should the maximum density be for northwest Superior? Density for this whole area, what should the maximum density be for Northwest Superior, right? And all of a sudden, if you have 10 developers who want to come in here and put in senior centers and apartment complexes, oh, wait a minute, our comp plan says the density should, it's going to be unlivable if we get to this number, right?
I still come back to a consultant would be really, really helpful, because these, we're, we're what, on our fourth meeting here? And we've made a lot of progress, but we haven't, you know what I mean? Like, I want, if, I know, I know you're hesitant to do that because you think it'll slow us down, but I'm, I think a consultant to help tie all this together, do the analysis, do the heavy lifting on a lot of this. I understand, I'm not saying that, you know, Stephen and I, like you keep saying, we have a planner, we have a planner, but this is, when you keep, when we keep throwing all these other things back in, which need to happen, if we don't throw everything back in, we're not going to see this for what it is, and it's in entirety, and I really think to do it right, to factor in market-driven stuff and an economic analysis, and what does the community want, and to have, you know, more than one public meeting and maybe to develop some surveys, I don't know. I'm just hesitant that we're going to get there in, in a timeframe that's reasonable without more resources put to this.
What would you all think, again, this is just brainstorming here for the sake of our work session, what would you all think about us launching into a series of public meet, public outreach, getting feedback from folks who live in this area and throughout the community, really? And then thinking about, in terms of our recommendations to the board, one of it would be, one of them would be, there needs to be, I would assume, some sort of a moratorium on development, have a consultant examine all of these issues and what our options are, and, and try to go about it from that standpoint.
Sorry, so say that again, so you think like a public meetings that we do and then a consultant?
Yeah, just to get some feed, I mean, because I think what we need to do is we need to go to the board with, kind of like we've done with McCaslin, you know, here's the issue, here's the feedback, here's the proposed fix, and then we need, we need to have the board buy in to that.
Totally. That's just it, we don't even have the board completely bought in on all of this, collectively.
Oh, absolutely, they're very bought into us working on this, absolutely, but what the, yeah, they're not bought into anything.
The solution, the go-forward plan, right?
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's.
In the process, right.
But, I mean, I'm kind of with you, Lisa, only because I know so little about planning myself. I mean, it, only from what I picked up through my years on the commission, but, you know, if we had a consultant who could look at each of these issues and look at the character of the neighborhood in general, look at the traffic flow issues that we've identified, the density issues, the house size issues, all of that, that, I don't know what you would call this, the kind of the, the legacy zoning issues that are there, and come up with a game plan for dealing with it, so, so that 10 years from now, we're all looking back going, gee, we're really glad we did that, you know, rather than, gee, this really got out in front of us, and we couldn't stop it.
I, that's just it, I really just, I would love to do this right. And even just to hold public meetings, I mean, I've, we've, you know, we've organized public meetings, it takes a lot of staff time, and I don't know that we can sit up here and take 20 minutes and jot down a few questions, and then, that it would be an effective public meeting, that we'd be getting, you know, the type of feedback that, that would be helpful and inform the process in a meaningful way going forward. I mean, I'm not saying we can't open it up and just have people share their thoughts and ideas, but I also think, like you were saying, like, what are some questions we should be asking them? I'm not trying to minimize our work up here, but I, we're a meeting for, and I don't feel like we've actually, we've talked a lot, and I think we've uncovered a ton of issues, and I don't want to negate the value of the meetings that we've had, but I just, I would love, I would love more resources to get this.
Well, it would show commitment on the town side, if they would commit those resources, right?
Absolutely.
Then we would see that, that would be good. The two things that, so one thing that concerns me about a consultant, and this is just what I don't want to happen, but what I've seen happen, is I don't want a consultant to come in here and look at this and go, whoa, look what you guys can do. That's not what I want, right?
It's community-driven.
Right. This has got to be deeply community-driven, right?
And that can be upfront and centered in whoever we hire.
And so I want, having a, you know, having, somebody who's focused on planning based on what a community's desires are, not what the potential is for an area, right?
And I would argue our community wouldn't let that happen.
Probably, possibly, yeah, I don't know.
I don't think we would, I don't think we would let that happen.
So I'm glad we're, so we're all on the same page, that's one thing I wouldn't, wouldn't want to have, happen. I still feel like we need to hear from the public. I'm trying to figure out how to do that. I mean, I don't want to bring in a consultant if the public just doesn't care about any of this, right? If we can't get this to be community-driven, then, yeah, but, I'm, then we shouldn't do this, right? I mean, this.
So my, my opinion is that I think we're too early in the process to bring in the community and have meetings about what Northwest Superior should look like. We mentioned this earlier, that maybe we, as a group, need to come up with six answers, six questions or so, and narrow down the number of components that go into those questions, because we, like Lisa says, we just keep adding more and more layers to this, and it's becoming more and more complicated and more and more convoluted, and I think we need to, my opinion is we need to get more focused on what we would want to ask the public and the community before we bring them in and have an open quorum.
And sure, maybe, maybe it's as simple as, you know, developing a list of five or six questions, you know, what are your primary concerns about, you know, the next five years, the next 20 years, you know? Do you, would you participate in, you know, a process to help do this, or, you know, would you, I don't know, I mean, just to try and gauge interest?
For what it's worth, you know, in that transportation plan, only because I've been kind of focused on that with our other work session item, there were, there was a combination of both. It was, we did surveys, and we did, I think, eight community outreach meetings. And I do think you have to have several, because not everybody can come.
Yep.
Not everybody knows about it, you know, it's kind of, word starts to kind of spread, and then, but it would be nice, I think, I'm just guessing, from the board's standpoint, it would probably be nice for them to know that, hey, we identified this as a need, you know, you guys blessed it, we pursued it, we, we got the community feedback, this is, these are the steps we took. Now we think that, you know, something needs to happen. Now, maybe the feedback is, nah, we're good, nothing needs to happen. I don't think that's going to be the feedback, but something needs to happen, and maybe it's, you know, we recommend the hiring of a consultant to come in and analyze all of these issues for us, and with the marching orders, that it's to be driven by what the members of the community say that they want, not by, to your point, Bob, what somebody might think, gee, you could really make this into my dream.
What about, and so I wrote down open house, and it just, because we can't really come up with questions, it's going to get equally convoluted. Coming up with a series of questions, ask people, it's going to be hard, because people aren't educated on what's going on, right? And I've been to a few open houses, and I know some consultants have done this, so I don't know if it's reasonable for us to pull this off, but some of the, some of the committees have done this as well. But pick the things that we know people need to know about, right? That, here's the zoning map, here's what these things mean, right, in this area, here's the, the report from the, regarding the transit-oriented development and the reroute of McCaslin, whoever did that report, right, make sure that report is out there. Traffic volumes, that counts that have been done, just information, just place where people can come, and we can come and just talk with people, and they can see this is, these are the things going on in this area, and just let's hear what people have to say, you know, and just, so they let them get educated, so that they have a sense of what's, because you ask a question and people don't know why you're asking it, you know, we're asking you this because, you know, RTD might want to put in, you know, multifamily housing over here and add 200 or 500, I don't know, however many people, and.
I think the open house style would totally work.
And, right, and, yeah, these are all the things that we're concerned that could happen. What do you think about this?
I think open house style could work. I think if we, if we went that direction, we would just need a mechanism to capture that feedback, to share with the board, to justify the reason for this project.
I like the board there, too. I think the board, I mean, if we do an open house, I think commissioners need to be there, I think the board needs to be there. I think we need to be talking to people when you get people down here.
And along those lines, and I think that if we do have an educational meeting, it needs to be a non-biased educational meeting. We need to say, this is how our, what's zoned for this area, this is how the zoning works for this area, much like Stephen was doing. This is what you can put here, this is what you can put here. Look at what other communities are doing, and then have the community or derive some questions from that point, but not to say there's going to be issues with transportation, because then you're skewing the outcome of what you're trying to accomplish there. You want people to be open, and you want them to be educated and understand what they're asking questions about.
That's the right planning, right. Like, if we're going to take this, like, as a planner, that's the right way to do it. I mean, I understand as a resident, that might not be the message you want to do, but if we're going to take it as an unbiased, and we're going to be open to whatever answer, then we need to simply present information, not presented as, hey, we have a lot of problems, but, hey, here is information, and then get the feedback.
You could consider that a bias, too, right? You can treat that, an unbiased approach, without sharing the reasons we're even talking about this, is bias in and of itself away from doing, right? You, we're a community of people, we live together, we work together, we have meetings together, we volunteer on boards together.
It's going to be possible.
You're not going to get, you're not going to get me to be unbiased on what I think just because I'm on the planning commission. I'm driving this thing, for God's sake. I mean, and you know I'm sitting here, people are clear that I'm, I mean, it's obvious that I'm deeply concerned about what's going to happen to this area if we don't give it the attention it needs soon, right? I'm deeply concerned, I'm deeply biased.
But then if you share that yourself, that's your opinion.
Agreed.
And it comes from you. If we come in and we ask our community, what would you like to see happen with Northwest Superior, that's a whole different question.
I think our roles are different. I agree.
Possibly, I mean, but I'm talking with these people daily.
No, and I'm not saying as a member, you absolutely, yeah, absolutely. I'm curious to hear from other folks, too, out here, if you've been hearing, you've been listening to us graciously for an hour and a half, and if you have thoughts as we've been talking, I'd love to hear them. An hour, 20 minutes.
An hour, 20 minutes, yeah. It's exciting.
Don't be shy. If you could just state your name and your residence.
I'm Bob Essen, I live in Coal Creek Crossing. I've been here about 15 months. As far as the bias, I agree with Bob completely. You can't get away from the bias. I also feel that if you have an open house without directing it carefully, you're going to have 50 people, and you know you're going to get 50 different opinions. But to narrow that down, let's just say 50% of the people are thinking about selling their lots, and 50% are thinking about staying. You're going to have a 50-50 decision. So personally, I think your job is to come up with a vision and push that vision. That's what I'd like to see happen, and good luck with that. I understand that's going to be very difficult. I also had a question about just the number of units you can have on an RL, or an RM, you know, just diagonally across from you in the corner of Williams and Fourth. I sat in a board meeting last year where developer presented nine unit proposal for a half-acre lot, and the only problem that the board had was setback. Nobody said that's 20 units. So are we, do we have the right numbers here? And now I understand they're talking about six.
It's not a half-acre, it's closer to a quarter acre in size. It was nine.
It's .49, the one I'm talking about.
The one on the corner, I don't, it's three lots at 7,000 square feet each?
The county, county property viewer has it, it's just under a half an acre.
Yeah, three, three, three 600-acre lots, right?
Three 7,000 square foot lots.
It's just under, yeah, just under 600.
Yeah, so it's about half an acre, you're right. So, sorry, my math is bad. But either way, like, I, I don't recall exactly, I mean, it was too much, and I, and it may have been a question of, and I do recall they were meeting setbacks, but I don't know that the, I think they weren't meeting lot coverage requirements either, and I think they were exceeding those, those standards. I mean, that requires 45%, I believe, maximum lot coverage, and they, they were well over that from what I recall. So it was a concept plan and didn't go very far.
Right, and they were still packing, came back.
Yeah, and they would have required an actual full, for that amount of units, they would have required an actual site development plan, as I recall, too. So it's been, I think, a year and a half or two years since that one came in.
And they've come back since then with a six-unit proposal?
That is, and that's, so they've came back in for a building permit for a by-right use, where it's six units, two on each lot, so it's a duplex product. Yeah, and that's one that won't go back to planning commissioner and the town board. It's a, that's.
It's by use.
Yeah.
And I don't really have a problem with that. The problem also with limiting medium density is that it drives prices up, and it would be nice to have something more affordable, and not all living the dream, blessed. So that's all I have to say. I'm certainly interested in what's going to happen with Rogers Farm and things like that, and the RTD development. My one last question is, I read the, your charter of the planning commission, and it says you're a quasi-judicial body, and I have absolutely no idea what that means. Does anybody here know what that means? What does quasi-judicial mean?
Well, we do, we do sit in a judicial capacity on, on certain applications, but a lot of the times, we're acting in a legislative capacity on other issues. But we'll have public hearings when there's an application.
And do you have veto power? I mean, can you, you can only make recommendations to the board?
That's right.
That's what I understand. And my last comment is, I would urge you to understand the tools that are available. You know, a city like Santa Fe, New Mexico, if you build a new building there, it has to be adobe, okay? So there's, you know, legal ways to do those kinds of things, that's not necessarily the same thing, but the other thing is, I don't know, I lived in the city building for a long time, and if I wanted to expand my house above my garage, I had to get my neighbor's permission because I was blocking his sunlight. Superior does not have that. I looked before I moved in here, because I was interested in that, and my neighbor's blocking my solar panels in December. And that's fine, I understood that that could happen. There are other tools that maybe you haven't thought of yet that could be applied creatively. The historic thing is one idea, but maybe there's other types of districts besides historic, and I agree, you shouldn't abuse historic to get our own way, and that should be for specific use, but there may be other ways to do that, and a small area subplan, you know, seems like there may be things you can do to, I don't want to say impose your will, but that's basically what we want to do. We want to be careful. It sounds like the problem, we all point to Maple Street as the problem. I won't go into whether Coal Creek Crossing is a problem. I understand, I know that if I had lived in original town, I wouldn't have been happy if that was there, but being a resident there, I'm very happy to be in Superior. So you do have to look at the rights of the property, too. That was pretty rambling, but that's all I wanted to say.
Thanks for your comments. Anybody else want a chance to speak?
Laurel Russell, 212 West Maple, right across the street from the Monstrosities. I just want to throw out a few ideas that may not fit into what all you're talking about tonight. I'll sit down and organize that some other time. But I'm a lifelong citizen of this community. My grandfather was a coal miner here, and this, I love this town. I love the way it is. I'm not looking for a $800,000 home. I live here because I like what it is. I like what my neighbors do, not always, but for the most part. And I think there's a good part of the community that feels the same way I do. As far as high-density development, I, you may have to throw that out, but I haven't seen a lot of people that are interested in it. And it impacts, whatever you do, impacts the traffic, for one thing. Have you ever went down Fourth Street and set at Sycamore and Marshall and tried to get on that road? It's crazy. You wait for five minutes, and then you get a car just out into the intersection. Or Second Street, if you go down Second Street and trying to get on Marshall Road. Sometimes you can sit there for ages just to get onto the road. So more people coming in and higher-density things is definitely going to affect all of that. I can't speak for everybody in town, but I can speak for a lot of them as far as liking the way we live. We don't want our property to be completely devalued, but we also, we don't care if it's not $800,000 homes in, in this community. thousand dollar homes in, in this community. It's a unique community and we live here because we like it. I guess that's all I'll say for now. I'm probably not done, but.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks for your comments.
Suzanne Silia Ratliff, four oh five South Third Avenue. Thanks for looking into this. This is so great because every time you go out walking and every time you go out to get your mail and every time you go out for coffee and every time you're wherever, what you're talking about tonight is being discussed. And it's being discussed with a lot of concern and a lot of fear. And so we thank you. I, I know I can speak for many people to say thank you so much for addressing these issues. This is great. I like Laurel Russell and she's a lifetime community member here. I like to joke and say I began a presence in original town Superior in nineteen seventy-nine, but I'm still somewhat considered a newcomer. And that's kind of fun to say. But I feel a lot like Laurel does. I love original town Superior. I've attended a lot of meetings here. And one of the things that was fun one time is somebody got up and said, they were talking about development up in Rock Creek, and they were saying, well, if we do that, I'm going to go out on my back deck and I'm going to see their stuff, meaning the next door neighbor. Well, we go out in our yards and we see people's stuff and we don't object a whole lot. We give a lot of space to be who you are. But when I listen to these numbers, I have a quarter of an acre and I have one home on it with a few outbuildings. And a friend came and said, Suzanne, you don't live in a home, you live in a compound. And we love these kinds of things about our community. We're very individual people. I listen to the numbers and the charts and that, and I share with you. I'm now retired, but my work was down the road at the university. We did lots of charts and we did lots of structure and we did lots of formal things. I don't think you're going to find people extremely receptive, including myself, in very structured discussion. We want to talk to you. You're our representatives and our town council people are our elected people. And we also expect that our tax money goes to our staff people here. We expect them to be ours in representing us. So that's what I would appeal to you about. We think you're ours. We don't think the developers should own you. We think when issues come up, you will stand for us and what we love here in our community. But I want to add one more thing here too, is that we are something to Rock Creek. We are something to Sagamore. We are something to the wonderfulness up on the hill. We are something to the gated community. We are your roots and your beginning. And that has great value to people here, but I think it has great value to the outlying communities too. People are excited when they know, oh my gosh, we didn't just start a little while ago. We started way back with the history of the coal mines that Laurel is speaking about. And, and so I guess what I would say is, let's hear what we would like here in original town, but know that this has great value for all the other neighborhoods here. We aren't some great weirdness here. We're the roots, we're the wonderfulness of the beginnings. There have been many, many meetings here. I don't know, Phyllis has been here so long and you called on her as a member of the community as well as a longtime staff person here. I remember, I'm sure Phyllis does, Joel Eggers, who was a person who worked here, holding a meeting right here in this room that was so huge, we had to be sandwiched in everywhere, all original town people. And the information that came out in that meeting as far as what people in original town want, what we're about, what we see as this sense of community and we want you to protect for us, that all came out. How many years ago was that, Bob? I'm trying to remember. Phyllis was here, you were here, but many years ago. So my question is, where's that info? It hasn't changed a lot. That data was so valuable then, it's valuable now. The communities have changed some, but there's still the protection. Finally, I'll say there are a lot of board minutes from the past. And I remember sitting here being so excited when you had board members who were talking about preserving the original town for what it means and anything that was, let's see, within or contiguous to original town, had to reflect the sense of community here. I don't know how you write that in as far as regulations, but I would just appeal to you to find ways to do that. If we had previous boards that stood for that, I'd ask you to maybe look back at those minutes, look back at what they thought we would do and revisit zoning or designations of community areas because it really can be done. And there was something that said something about two years. If we wait two years, it will be too long. It's being gobbled up now. And so you're very timely, and one of you said if not too late, but you're at least very timely. I have a little favorite thing I like to say. I'm very in favor of affordable housing. I think it's important. I think it's valuable. I am not in favor of affordable ghettos. And I think when we see a developer come in wanting to do row after row, street after street of affordable housing, this is not good for our community. What can we do to have affordable living space everywhere? I think there should be affordable living spaces in Rock Creek. I think there should be affordable living spaces everywhere. And someone, I've spoken here before on that topic, someone came up to me afterwards, Suzanne, we do not agree with you. I don't want those people living next door to me. Well, I guess I would say those people are probably any one of us tomorrow if things don't go well in our lives. And I think we have to be welcoming, but not just pick a section to dump everybody into. That invites trouble. That was long. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Caitlin Kelly, twenty thirty-five Eagle Avenue. I'm a homeowner in Superior and I just want to thank you for all the work that you guys do for this town. I always told myself when I bought a house, I'd get involved in my community. So just, this obviously is not super relevant to me. So just things that I'm passionate about in this town are, I'm honored to be a part of this community. And I think that it's very important that when making these decisions and presenting, I guess, a motion or however it goes about to the town is that you're taking into consideration the homeowners who have been here for decades. I think that's what's most important. It's the people who are passionate about this town. They have been for years. They've contributed to this town for years and they've almost created kind of the feeling that you get when you're in Superior. And that's one of the things that drew me to this area is the character of Old Town. Obviously, the more southeast you get, gets a little tougher with the cookie cutter neighborhoods, but I'm from the East Coast. So seeing just this small part of Old Town and all the eclectic feel, it's, it's got character. I think it's very rare, especially for what's happening in Boulder County with the mass developments. And it's a conversation starter. If developers were to come in and start just buying these lots and making rows and rows of things, it's, you're really losing the aesthetic that I think is very, very important in this town. And the affordable living spaces that also you mentioned, I think that it's very important, but at the same time, it is a little less feasible with the property values booming in the entire county and state. Another thing that I am very passionate about is seniors. And a concern of mine in the entire town is that we don't have a senior center or a place for seniors to downsize. So when it comes to development, not necessarily an assisted living facility or fifty-five plus, but I think that those resources need to be available because there's people who have lived here that I've met just through different volunteering. And they've been here their entire lives and they're now living in houses that are way too big for them. They're needing different resources, meals on wheels and people driving them to and from medical appointments because they don't want to leave this town. They've been a part of this town for fifty-plus years and they don't have anywhere to go. So I think if any sort of development is going to progress and move forward, that the people who have created this town and given it the feel that it has, need to be taken into consideration. So.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm new to all this. Thank you very much.
Well, folks, on a going forward, what do we think? Are we going to try to set up an open house?
Sorry.
Figure out how to moderate this thing?
Yeah, Bob, I do want you to know, I'm not trying to make this.
Oh, no, no, no.
I'm on, we're on the same page. We're on the same team.
This is, this is awesome conversation.
It's a complicated thing.
I'm quite, quite happy with the conversation that's going on.
The one thing I was going to say before we took public comment is, you know, I think there might, there, one way we can sort of mitigate the potential bias of getting feedback would be, let's have some informative discussions. Let's put the information out there to folks. Let's consider a survey and encourage everybody who attends to complete that, but ask, ask them to rank issues that they find important to them in order of importance. You know, maybe there are going to be some ties, but you know, maybe it'll be traffic congestion. Maybe it'll be, you know, the, the house size under the current building ordinances. I, I don't know. But at least then we would be able to have some kind of a data set that we could start with and say, you know, whether it's giving a, giving consultants a charge or giving the board some feedback and saying, you know, we need to, we need to put, we need to do a moratorium.
And then we can advocate for it, right?
Right.
Like then I think, yeah, I think that's an interesting way to do it. So the first, you know, the first approach is very open-ended. Once we hear from them, then we advocate and then our bias is, you know, maybe we, maybe we can approach it that way.
Yeah. I mean, it, it kind of seems like folks are going to be aligned on some basic issues. It strikes.
And there's some that are not.
Yeah.
There might be, right?
But that's okay though.
No, it's good. It's all good.
Well, and, and you know, it was that way when we went through the last, the comprehensive plan process and the transportation plan process. Not everybody was exactly aligned on every single issue, but you could kind of see where the majority of folks landed on most things.
Yeah.
I think that's where we want to end up, right?
Mm-hmm.
So do we want to talk about an open house? Is that something we need a consultant for? Can we pull it off with staff and commission? And can we get the board to approve staff time to do that? Could we identify the three, six, nine items that we want to stick in front of people and, you know, whether we have them put dots on, red dots on the stuff that's real important and yellow dots on the stuff that they don't care about, you know, whatever.
Yeah.
But whatever we decide, right? Just to get a data set like, like.
I'm, I'm all for doing that. I mean, I'd love the public comment thing, but the problem is, you know, we're probably going to have some pretty, pretty significant attendance at these things. And we'll be here all night if we let everybody get up and speak. If there was a way, you know, if there was a way to moderate it so that we could get actionable feedback without it turning into a marathon session, that I would be all in favor of that. If it has to be a marathon, it has to be a marathon.
Well, I like the approach, the advocate approach, right? So if we, if town board and planning commissioners are spending the entire time at one, two, or three, whatever we decide, open house or open houses, then you get to hear it firsthand from lots of different people. And then we can come together and figure out whether we think we heard, all heard roughly the same thing or different things. You know, I think between maybe having some method to capture, you know, yeah, this is a high priority item for me. You guys need to work on this, whatever it happens to be, whether it's traffic congestion, whether it's development standards, whether, yeah, whatever it is, but capture that data in addition to having conversations with people to understand why. Then we'll get passionate about whatever the, the important things are, you know, because we all want to live here and we like it here. And, you know, and we like the challenging conversations and we like to talk this stuff through and we want to, you know, well, I mean, I get fired up about it. I mean, I, that's just, that's just me. I'm not, you know, I know I sound defensive sometimes, but I'm, you know, it's, it's passion and it's, it's, it's interest.
Passion as well. No, I, I think, I think that would be good because I, personally, I'd like to know, I'd like to get to the bottom of what we need to advocate for, you know? What, what does the pub, what do the residents, residences, residents want us to advocate for? And I'm concerned that, that the square that I would land on might not be, might not be all that important to other, to the folks who have to actually live with it. And I don't want to go, you know, off, off on a tangent. Looks like Stephen pulled up some of the original thoughts we had on this. Good work, Stephen.
Did we want to promote the experiment with Fourth, closing Fourth?
I think we need to hear from folks first.
I think it's supposed to come up in the September transportation meeting. I think it got bumped.
Oh, that's true. Okay.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that.
I think, yeah. I don't mind us continuing to talk about it in case it isn't, but yeah, I think it is.
So these are the topics that, for the, for the benefit of folks out there, these are kind of what planning commission identified as kind of the primary potential areas of interest for the community to talk about, to figure out kind of what direction maybe to go or not go. So if we built off something like this, developed a survey, you know, maybe in advance of the meeting or in addition to the meeting and kind of asked folks how they feel about these issues. Are these awesome, best thing ever? Are these awful, we never want to see them? And if we, and, you know, and then maybe that helps us target, do we need a consultant or not? You know, if all we hear is, you know, trans, traffic is the only problem, you know, then maybe, maybe we're fine. If we hear that all of this is, you know, a big issue and a big concern, well then, you know, we might need some professional assistance to help us, you know, approach this from a holistic perspective. So.
I think we heard, we heard a couple of other issues tonight that I hadn't really been focused on. You know, elder housing.
Affordable housing, absolutely.
Senior center, affordable housing. Those weren't really at the forefront of my mind, you know, as we were working through this before.
And you're a big proponent of senior housing, I know, right?
A little bit, but.
Come on, show your passion.
And affordable housing. I mean, when you look at our community and we've been completely, you know, out of that.
This is the second time I've heard this way of doing it, distributing it throughout. And I just love that.
I do too.
It just seems like that's doable.
And you know, some tool maybe potentially we could use or, or think about if that comes up as an issue is you can offer, you know, kind of bonuses to developers or builders if they include a portion of affordable housing, you know, so that it's, it's a means to, I think, incentivize getting some affordable housing in this community because we have zero.
Which even, maybe we could even require it.
Or we could require it. Wouldn't that be odd? That would be even better. But yeah, I know I'm on the minority on that.
But yes, I, I love incentives. Requiring's not bad either.
Any volunteers on presenting the information at the open house? I mean, you know, I think what we want to do is we want to, we want to be able to say this is an educational process. And we want to, we want to give folks an idea of the things that we're thinking about as a planning commission. And we want to hear from you all as to whether this matters or doesn't matter and where your priorities are. But.
I, I see a hint. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to look to Stephen on that, I think, just to see kind of how much.
How much?
How much of your time or resources of the town, you know, printing posters or develop, you know, the survey monkey survey or how much time we would need to have.
Right. So, and that's what's tricky. If you want to do, I mean, I've heard two different things. I guess I've heard we do a survey first and then we figure out, maybe that helps guide the open house discussion. And then I've also kind of gotten the impression that we may want to do an open house as soon as our next meeting. Noticing that, we may just want to give it more time in order for folks to, you know, not have two weeks' notice in order to get to a meeting. As far as staff time, if it's an extensive amount of staff time, I think that's probably more of a conversation that we haven't had the direction from the boards yet as to how much dedicated staff time we have for that, you know? If it's a couple hours or something like that, probably not a big deal. If it's, you know, a lot of legwork, then, you know, that does have to come from, I mean, for me, my direction has to come from the town manager. His direction has to come from the town board. So, so I don't know that we have that direction yet. But you guys are meeting with them in August. So, I mean, it's also, you know, I think something that you guys can recommend that we have a series of these, you know, open houses, if that's kind of the direction. I'm not sure that, I mean, I think more is probably better than fewer. I don't know what, if there's a magic number. But, you know, just folks' schedules, you don't wanna just have one and then miss out on a chunk of. And it may be something that even within, you know, north, the northwest area that we've identified, that you have, you know, one for Sagamore, you have one for Original Town, you have one for Gold Creek Crossing, you know, you break it up into areas and, you know, talk to the folks in the marketplace as well. Or just see, you know, send it out to everybody and have everybody try to show up for, you know, three or four different opportunities to have the same conversation or to have iterations of the same conversation. But, so, I mean, if it's as informal as we just wanna start the conversation with the public and we wanna have a, an open house, you know, two weeks from now or a month from now, then I think we can do that as well. It's just, it's probably gonna be a lot less structured and, you know, I don't know what the strategy is for, for notification. We can certainly send it out in the newsletter, the monthly newsletter. We can send it out on e-blast. Those type of things are, you know, fairly easy to accommodate. But if we wanna come up with a survey, send out a survey, analyze the survey, you know, that type of thing, it's gonna take a little more time.
I would have three comments, I guess, Stephen. One is, I wouldn't discount having one in Rock Creek cause I think that there would be residents in Rock Creek who, you know, they have thoughts on what they would like Original Town to look like. I think I would do the survey after the open houses because I think the purpose of the open houses would be to educate people and get them thinking about these issues. And then find out, after they've had a chance to reflect on it, what's most important to them. That, that's just, that would be my, my bias. And I would suggest three to four open houses, probably four at a minimum. That's just my bias. That would be educational in nature, a dialogue with folks in attendance. And, and just tell them, look, be sure to be on the lookout for a survey. It's gonna go out, you know, whatever date. We need, we need as much participation as we can get so we can get as good of a vision, of good of a window into the public as we can get. That, that would be my bias.
Or we could send them the computer or the iPad right there after they leave the open house and fill out the survey.
Yeah, I mean, assuming their opinions are in cement at that point. I mean, I, maybe I'm a freak, but I, I like to reflect on, I like to absorb the information and process it and think about, okay, for example, I hadn't really thought about the senior center issue. You know, and would need to think about that a little bit more because it seems to make a little more sense now that I've been focused on it. I think maybe some of our, some of our residents might have a similar experience.
What do y'all think in terms of what we can do between now and, we have an August session, so to speak?
Yes, I'm trying to think of what the, I think it's the second weekend in August or the, no, it's the fourth week in August. I think it's the last week for the board discussion.
July or August?
I think the meeting with the board is the fourth.
I'm just wondering, is there anything we can do to generate feedback that we can arm ourselves with when we go in in August? Or maybe that's too fast and unrealistic. I don't know.
I mean, I'll have some conversations with some board members about this discussion, too, if they wanna bring it up. But, I mean, if, I mean, and I don't know if we can get traction in the summer. It could just be hard to get traction in the summer, right? Cause it's, you know, there's vacations and people are off. But I think it would be good if we had some idea of what this open house might look like. And even just start talking to your friends and neighbors and board members that you have relationships with. I think that would be, I mean, that's, you know, one of the problems is a lot of our recommendations, they, they go into the minutes and maybe they get read, maybe they don't, you know? And I know, for example, the, the only reason that the McCaslin recommendation is coming out is cause the board member saw it, pulled it out and said, hey, wait, wait a minute. This needs to be on the agenda. That's a different topic. I wanna bring up for a different day. We'll save that, but, cause I'd like those to become agenda items, not buried in minute types of things when we do that, right? But, so I think, right now, since the process is more around communicating with, with folks, that's how we're gonna get things done, right? Not necessarily just, just by passing recommendations or hoping that they're listening to our conversations tonight, right? So, but if we could define a little bit about, you know, what this open house might look like, that might, that might help, too. And I do have some thoughts on that, but.
Tell us what you're thinking.
Well, so we have ten items up there. It seems, I mean, I, the way we've seen these before that, that I think have worked is you basically have stations around with some charts and maps and somebody nearby that, that knows something about that topic, right? So whether it's development standards and here's the zoning map and here are the things you can do and here's all the infill potential in Original Town and here's, you know, all that kinda stuff. And whether we break out Original Town from, from Marketplace possibly or put them side by side because, and Seventy-sixth Street Properties, so the, so we have the open parcels behind, the open parcels, Marketplace and Original Town, potential development. Traffic, right? So just in general, volume of, volume of traffic and cut through traffic and those things could be an area that, that's, we have information about. Density, well, I get, and the density might fall, I mean, there's, there's this.
It maybe falls out to like character.
Yeah.
Some of those like pace of growth, density concerns, traffic, cause I'm looking at that, maybe.
Yeah, you start, yeah, we start looking at, you know, we just have to have an area around, you know, development standards, character, architecture, do you care? You know, I mean, this is what we have, this is what could happen, this is what's going on, what do you care about? And, and it might just be, you know, four, you know, I mean, there's probably just a few groupings of key items up here that we could just have some, you know, visuals, some of the documents. I mean, I'd like a comprehensive plan should be sitting here. Our, the report about the realignment of Marshall Road should be here, which should be, be sitting here. Charts, potentially, maybe not this one, but, but, you know, but.
Nice, yeah.
But just, yeah, something showing what the existing code is, right, in, in our area? So that we can have discussions around it.
I completely agree. And I think to have effective open houses that are informational in nature, we need to have, you know, definitely some thoughtful information. It needs to be prepared well and, and that would take a lot of time, having, you know.
But a lot of it's there. I mean, we're not looking to create new information. We just have to pull together the information in a meaningful way and present it. But yes, that's not, that's not, that's a task.
Pulling it in a meaningful way and getting it in a presentable thing is, you know, takes.
Yeah, you're right. Posters have to be created and put on easels and, and, yeah, and it takes hours to do it, so we, but, but.
I just don't wanna, I don't wanna assume that we have the direction to even do that at this point. I mean, if we do, then let's, let's go forward. I guess I'm checking in here.
I think there's a, I mean, there's a difference between you taking this on as a planning commission and there's a difference between it being a staff assignment. And we don't have the direction for, you know, a significant amount of staff hours. We just don't have it cause we don't have a big staff.
How do you get, how do you get those?
How do I get what?
Staff hours, is that directed by the board?
That would be the board, yeah. Yep. I get it to the town manager, but it's from the board, yeah, so.
Can we cut the list down into half or even a third of it? Cause I think we have an open house with hypothetically ten.
Yeah, I think there's three, three or four items.
I think we need to hone in on two, three, four biggies, so to speak, the ones that we can put together some other informational backup stations to or whatever you wanna call it. But I think ten is too many, three, four or something like that.
Well, I think it's, it's development.
As the, as the first cut.
Yeah, development possibilities, traffic and Original Town, character and, you know, blah, 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 yeah.
You can chew on it one session and exhaust it.
Yeah, I think three or four stations is, and I think there's, I think you cover everything with three or four stations. To be honest with you, I think three or four stations, all of this can be, can be covered, you know? Cause it is, it's about what could be developed in the undeveloped parcels. What do we want Original Town to look like? And how do we feel about traffic and cut through and volume, which is created by density and number of people, right?
Maybe all of that would fall under category number four, two, if we're gonna prioritize. I mean, I wanna get the information and education, educational information out there first or have it part of that. This is what can be developed, like you were saying.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there's ways to combine those, I would, I would think.
So where would we have this? You wanna have it here or school, what do you think?
It's a tough one, right?
Yeah, I mean, we could do one here, we could do one at the school.
It affects when we schedule it, too.
Yeah. I mean, it might be nice, if we're gonna do a few of them, do one over lunch hour, do, I mean, it'd be nice if we could set this thing up quickly, right? That we're not creating some monster that we can't, you know, that we can't, that, you know, if we can make something as reasonably portable and we can set up in ten or fifteen minutes or twenty minutes, you know, be ready for an hour-long lunch or two-hour-long lunch and maybe one in the evening and, I don't know, maybe a breakfast meeting or, you know, maybe invite the chamber, get the chamber folks to, you know, just get people's.
That's gonna, I'm just thinking of our schedules. You know what I mean? If we all had a couple of stations. I agree with you. I think to be effective, we need to, we need to provide different times and, and, and things like that. I'm wondering, my brain is going to, you know, how do I communicate in a visual manner? You know, what is possible? What could Original Town develop into? That's, that's a challenging exercise.
I think the zoning map is really the jumping off.
Yeah, I think it's a line item and discussion. I don't think it's ideas being, you know, you've even, we don't wanna put any preconceived notions in people's mind.
No, I think I just heard you say like, what was possible? Like, what was, you know, kind of the build-out possibility?
Oh, well, I was thinking zoning maps.
Okay, okay.
This is, here are the infi, here are all the lots that could have development on them. I mean, I've already done that. I mean, I've, I could shoot that over to these guys and they could just build from that. I think I've highlighted every potential infill lot in town. Might need to be just reviewed, but, you know.
Maybe we should request money from the board to get a consultant because we know that that's gonna take some time. I still feel like there's a lot of components here.
I know.
And to have a mediator or someone is, can come in and not necessarily have any ties to what's going on, but can just listen and help us process this whole thing and help us narrow down our list of priorities and help us prioritize those things. Because I, I think there is a lot of passion with this issue and there's gonna be a lot of passion revolving around this issue. And you really, in my experience, you want someone to be able to remove themselves from that and be objective. And that is gonna take some money. And maybe that should be our next step.
That's a decent point, true. And maybe whatever information we need to gather from the community to take to the board with our dinner in August to justify this expense.
My, my only concern about that is the time.
I know.
It's just gonna, I mean, this is all happening quickly and, and, you know, and I, the process to go that direction, I'm not even convinced it is. I, I don't have a high, I haven't seen a consulting situation here that I'm thrilled about. I truly have not, you know, maybe one or, you know, none of them have excited me to any degree that, you know, I don't know.
Well, maybe we haven't been asking the right questions.
Possibly, possibly.
And maybe we haven't been expressing what our needs are in a way that we've needed to in the past. But I think that, I mean, we pointed this out earlier that if we give some clarity to a consultant or someone who's non-biased, they're gonna do what we ask them to do. That's just kind of the nature of their job and.
Yeah, yeah. But, yeah, it just falls back on time, you know, to get that. I mean, it could be November till we get, you know, an open house done if we do go that direction. I don't know, I mean, to have to see, I mean, summer, it's gonna be July, August and then discussions and then blah, 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 and then quotes and bids and RFPs or whatever else people have to do. And then, next thing you know, it's, you know, November till we schedule a meeting.
And I'm not saying that we should wait. I'm saying that we should get the ball rolling in terms of getting consultant or mediator on board. And because we are gonna have to ask for money to do that, we, you know, your, your point is it's gonna take a long time.
Yeah, yeah.
And so do we wanna wait for that? Or do we wanna have someone who can come on board?
Or do we think staff can pull it off with some of our help or not? You know, that's the other, and I, and I don't know. That's, that's, I, I, you know, I can only look to staff and see whether they think this is a reasonable thing to do or not.
It's super hard to gauge cause, I mean, it really depends on how many development applications we have, you know? And we have a handful, like, kind of in the works. And we've had waves like last year where we had, you know, half a dozen come through kind of all over the summer, so.
Then everything stops.
It's hard to predict. I don't think that, I think, you know, Commissioner Stewart's point that you could take two parallel paths and, you know, make a recommendation that you, you get a consultant and you still, you know, dig in your heels and try to find out as much information from the public so that you can inform that consultant, you know, with as much input from as many people as we can.
And we can float both ideas. I mean, we can float both ideas of doing it internally versus hiring a consultant and see where the board lands, yes.
Well, I certainly wouldn't wanna make a recommendation, stop work and then find out that we don't get a consultant and then we pick up two months from now or something like that, so.
Right, yeah, 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 yeah.
And based on what you've heard thus far, Stephen, do you think that this is gonna be an easy process? That's not gonna take a lot of time?
No.
Based on that we're at meeting four and.
Part of that is to your guys' credit. You guys wanna do a thorough job on this. You wanna get, you know, several rounds of community input and you wanna get it done right. So I, I think that as much as we'd like to have a policy in place tomorrow, that, you know, is effective, we, you know, we just gotta accept that it's gonna take some time, you know?
So if we were to go to the board and ask for some money to hire a consultant, how soon could we do that?
Into a public comment, the next meeting if you want.
Yeah, I mean, you can say it. Yeah. That's my first response, too. I mean, you can always go to the board and ask. And, but, I mean, I think that it comes a little bit, you know, stronger when we make the recommendation or whatever through an actual motion, you know, so.
Are there, isn't there some short timeframe? I mean, can we get something on the agenda, like a, in that presentation, for a timeframe? You know, like Heather, Heather gets ten or fifteen minutes to do a chamber update, right? These, these just little bits of.
Yeah, we could ask, for sure. Have like a PC update, just be, I mean, if that kind of requires somebody coming from, you know.
Oh, yeah, one of us would need to come and make the request, yeah. Think we could come up with a motion to, to make a recommendation and.
To request a consultant or is that what you're thinking?
Well, yeah, I think if, if we could come, if we could, I'd, I'd say go at it with, we are interested in, in setting up a series of open houses
Oh, okay.
to, to, to communicate with the public, you know, three to four open houses over the period of, you know, a month or so to gather information and input. We, this, this could either be done in-house by staff time if, if time allowed or we could hire a consultant.
Let the board decide which.
Yeah, you know, and I don't know if you could give us a, even a ballpark of what a consultant would cost to do this. I don't know if this is a five thousand dollar project or a thirty thousand dollar project. That might be helpful, right? If we had a rough idea, what we might be looking at.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think part of it depends, too, on what all we want them to do. Do we want them just, you know, do we want them just to facilitate meetings? Or do we want them to then formulate recommendations and help us develop the plan?
I think, I think stage one, I think phase one is gather information from the community. So we can figure, like, going to your point of moving us into an advocate role of ourselves because now we've heard from the community and we understand it. And then we can decide, cause we may want a totally different consultant for, for that, for one thing versus the other.
Right.
So, I mean, I think, I see this as a short, a short-term project that hopefully would be knocked out in three months, right? So maybe even less, but that could come in. Yeah, just come in, here's our ten items. We think they can be narrowed down to three or four. We wanna have four stations in here, roughly, we think. And we wanna get people in here.
And they can develop the boards and the graphics and the materials, whatever is needed, you know?
And staff can provide the data to do that.
Yeah, staff can provide them, but then they can actually take the time to.
Yes.
And we should have information on that. We've done that previously.
Yes, oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I don't have it off the top of my head, but I know we've had a consultant for various projects in the past. So I, we can probably get some numbers as to what that costs, so.
We can't, can we, can we, we can't make a motion tonight, though, to do this, right?
We haven't, I mean, this has just been a work session.
Right, so we would have to.
Do it at the next voice.
But we could request visually during public comment.
You could request what?
Sorry, I'm thinking out loud, like, do we have to wait till the next planning commission meeting to develop this kind of formal recommendation, the request of the board?
Can we go to the next board meeting and present this here? Do we have to wait to have an official meeting to do that?
Does it need to become, does it need to come from the planning commission after action? Like, official action through a resolution or can we just?
I think that's preferable to come from as a motion. I mean, you could certainly go to the planning commission meeting as a member of the public and, and clarify what, you know, what you. I mean, you could certainly go to the planning commission meeting as a member of the public and, and clarify what, you know, what you've... Or to the town board meeting as a member of the public, and, and clarify what we discussed today, and, and see what direction they, you know, provide back, so you can come back to this group and discuss it. I mean, I think you can have that dialogue, kind of generally, but I think that it's probably better to follow the same path we did for, uh, the McCaslin meeting, which was actually, I mean, and, and one of the things you may wanna do is, you know, kinda outline these things, and, you know, and, and then those become the discussion items for some future meeting, you know, that, I think you could... What I'm kinda hearing, and what seems to be kinda falling in place, is you, you know, we may be requesting two different consultants, you know, and the, the consultant just to facilitate the meetings, maybe something that can get squeezed into, like, a this-year budget, you know, something that's a little broader for, uh, you know, the actual doing the study of the Northwest area plan. If that is where we end up, then that's probably something that would have to get on the budget for the 2018, just 'cause of the expense would be greater, um, and it's not budgeted for this year. But I think that, you know, you seem to be kind of formulating this general timeline, that you, you know, wanna bring a consultant, then, you know, within the next, you know, two or three months, have a series of meetings that last two or three months, bring, get the public opinion, and then move on to kind of a phase two, where you're actually, you know, responding to what you've, what you've heard, and outlining a plan. And that plan may be, you know, these are the, I mean, these are generally the outline of what you want the feedback on.
Yeah.
Uh, but it may get prioritized as to, you know, we need to tackle traffic first, or we need to tackle the development standards first, or however that kind of falls out.
So we're probably gonna wanna make a budget recommendation for 2018 to get in this year, get in the 2018 budget?
Right.
As soon as, you know, that needs to be in by, what, September, October?
The sooner the better, yeah, but, um, it doesn't get finalized, really, until, uh, the end of the year, like, November, December.
So it sounds like getting the community, I mean, so, do you think we could, well, can we, if we can get a consultant in this year, if that's feasible?
To do some public engagement.
Right, just to do...
I think to generate the demand, right?
Right, yeah.
Like, I think the goal of this would be, like, is this a problem?
Yeah.
If it is, which we assume it is, then that generates the demand and interest to justify the budget request.
Right, yeah, 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 so we're gonna need a little bit of budget this year to pull that off, whether that's...
Right, and...
Five or ten grand, I, um...
Or staff.
I have no idea, yeah, or staff.
I just don't know, I mean, I don't know if it's a fifty, hundred-hour project for a consultant, but, well, I'm sorta guessing, but...
Yeah.
So, Jim, do you wanna go up, you and I, and, and give a public comment preparation to the board, that here's what we're thinking, and this is... And I don't know if this would be worthwhile, but, and then July, what's our next meeting? That's July eleventh?
That's right, yeah.
I'm happy, I'm happy to do it with you.
And then, and then we'll make a formal recommendation, and maybe by then, they'll have already decided they don't need a formal recommendation.
Yeah.
They might be this direction, and send us off on our way, but...
Right.
But if not, we'll make, we can make a formal recommendation and...
So we can, so when did you say the next meeting is, the board meeting?
Just Monday is the next one.
Oh, this Sunday?
The next Monday, yeah, it's...
I'm traveling, or I'd be happy to go.
Yeah, I think I can do it, I think I can do it.
Do we all think that's worthwhile, would that be a worthwhile, that would jumpstart it if they're, if they're all go for it?
Can't hurt, if you guys are willing, I mean, I'm not available, but sure can't hurt, I don't know, Anthony, you're ahead.
I'm just...
I am!
It makes sense in light of what I witnessed, in connection with the McCaslin thing, which is, Bob, Bob was there with me, I mean... I, I almost think it makes sense for us to, to get a motion together, and I, I mean, if we could do it tonight, I'd do it tonight.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Get a motion together, make the recommendation to the board, and then I would say, when we present that motion, and seek approval of their minute, of our minutes by them, we've gotta figure out a better process, so that they actually get that on the agenda and act on it.
When's the board meeting after July eleventh?
There is someone...
There's not another one in July?
July, no, they, they canceled the second week in July, so it's August.
So they meet the tenth, and then they typically don't meet the second week in July for vacation, or whatever, they just don't have it. So it would be August fourteenth, I think.
Which is, wow, okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm looking at, that, oh, hmm.
Yeah, but see, but I'm thinking to the...
It's the seventh, isn't it?
What do you think? So you're hesitant?
You know, yeah, I am, because I, I think we heard very clearly, um, from Stephen, that it's gonna have, and be more impact, impactful if we make a formal recommendation to the board, instead of going up and making a request as a, a member of the community, you know? Where, you know, when you do it that way, you have the support of the planning commission, um, as opposed to just one person going up and doing it. And I think that's what I heard you say, but...
That's just the formal process, I mean, I think that, as, I think to Commissioner Sautel's point, uh, you kinda need to do both. You kinda need to, I mean, the most effective way is to make your recommendation, it's gonna come in, you know, as a consent agenda item, if it gets pulled, it's gonna get discussed, in this case, it kinda got pulled, and the, the decision was, we need to actually sit down and have a discussion about this, so we'll schedule it for a, a, another meeting, you know, rather than actually get discussed. But it could, you know, like, if it's something as simple as we're recommending one item, which is, you know, that we get a ten thousand dollar budget for a consultant to help us facilitate, you know, these community outreach meetings this year, then maybe that's something that they have the time to actually pull, and, you know, actually discuss and make a decision on that meeting. But I think, you know, like, if, if it doesn't happen, you just wanna get up there during the public comment, raise that, that that's what you're here for, and that you're here to answer any questions, and this is the reason why, and this is kind of like, you know, a quick outline of what you're doing, and then that kind of forces their hand to actually, you know, not just gloss over it, or, you know, not pull it up for discussion, so...
But how realistic is it that they'll act on that?
I don't know, I mean, this is our first kind of experience with this, they, they have to act on our development review applications, you know, those are agenda items, so this, this is kind of new territory for me with them, um, so I, I don't have any experience with it.
What, what, is it possible for us to do a work session next week, get the motion together, and get it in front of the board for the July tenth meeting?
Not to get a noticed work session done next week, no.
'Cause it can't be a work session, it has to be a real meeting, yeah.
Correct, I mean, we have fourteen days, we have to notice any meeting, or do we have, what's the notice requirement for, just for us to have a, a noticed hearing in order? Is it seven?
Seventy-two hours.
Seventy-two hours?
Twenty-four hours, twenty-four.
'Cause there's no public hearing, right, so...
It's not a public hearing.
It's just a notice hearing?
If it was a public hearing, it would be ten days.
Okay.
But we're not doing a public hearing.
Can we get enough people here for twenty minutes to do a motion?
Which day are we looking at?
So is that the same question, we're talking about a regular planning commission meeting?
It's not a, it's not a pub, yeah.
Special.
It's a special.
Right, that's what you guys are asking for, something next week off schedule.
Yeah, just so, just so that we could get a motion together, so that it could be presented to the board at their July tenth meeting.
So...
It'd be a very short meeting, in theory, if we kinda know what we wanna say already.
It would just be for the purpose of approving the motion that we wanna bring forward to the board.
We'd like to, yeah, we'd like to hire a consultant to engage in a series of, of three to five open houses, to gather information from the public about the Northwest area superior plan, uh, you know, yeah.
Next Tuesday? I mean, I could commit to some time. 'Cause we need five of us, right?
Be the twenty-seventh?
Yeah. You guys are...
I can, I can, I'm, I'm available the twenty-seventh, is that soon, then, that soon enough to get on the July eleventh agenda?
Oh, is it July eleventh?
July tenth, yes.
Yeah, that would be enough.
Yes.
Would you mind doing that? And it doesn't have to be, I mean, it can be earlier than seven, too, or does it have to be at seven? I mean, would people rather have it a little bit earlier, and just knock it out at six or something, or right after work?
It's just about to go.
What's your response, sorry?
It can be any time.
It can be any time, okay.
I love really, no, this is, this is fine with me.
Well, let's do six-thirty, 'cause I'm, I'm down in Denver, it takes me a while to get up here, but...
Would you be okay with that, Steve?
Yeah, I just think we could draft it now.
Okay, yeah, and let's draft the motion, then we can vote on it.
Okay.
Yeah, that's awesome.
What did we do last time?
Do we actually have to convene to vote? I mean, we do, we have to be present.
It has to be, it has to be...
That's why we don't, yeah.
Yeah.
That is pretty much the differentiation, I mean, and that it didn't get noticed, as, as such, you know?
It's gotta be an agenda with an agenda item.
Yeah.
If we're gonna take action on it?
And all that kind of stuff.
But you have to be present to win.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking.
Yes, can't do it by phone. We don't allow Skype.
You can run a Fortune five-hundred company by a conference call, but you can't make a motion for the planning commission.
No.
Bob, you kinda came up with some language just a little bit ago, but I didn't start typing yet, so, um, adoption or approval for... Consultant.
Take the wheel, Bob.
So the, the other thing that I think we'd wanna have prior to, uh, this time, is just some, you know, it can happen in, in a week, or whatever, but we would probably wanna note what budget we think it's gonna require, yeah.
A rough estimate of budget, yep. Do you have somebody in mind that you would suggest to do this, or...
I don't in particular, but I know that there's been, I think, for the town hall expansion, they used someone in particular just to facilitate those meetings, and so we have, we have somebody, that, I, I don't know their name.
Yeah, she was with Green Play, right, the design, yeah.
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that's somebody that, if you guys participated in any of that, and it was, uh, well-done, or whether or not you'd want, you know, us to look for other folks, but I know that there was somebody recently, and that was the one that came to mind, uh...
And then, too, it depends on, like, do we need to go out to bid, or where the budget lands with our purchasing goals?
Right, exactly, yeah, yeah, since we community outreach for a series of open houses to engage with the community or something, yeah. I think we needn't wanna get across that we're taking open houses.
I think open houses and survey development, or open house and other engagement means, yeah.
I would be careful with that other, depending on that.
I know, right, I just don't want, you know, I mean, I believe that's a little flexibility, but you're right, if they need it, yeah.
Yeah, but...
We could just do open houses for now, and that's...
Yeah, or, or, and I, yeah, yeah.
You think there's any way we could give them a ballpark estimate by next?
Yeah, he, he just mentioned that, what you were, yeah, yeah.
Would you like to adjust that one, Commissioner Momat?
Ballpark estimate?
Fill him in while he was gone.
Fill him in while he was gone.
He's gonna give him his story. He's not on in the bathroom?
Yeah.
He's having a conversation in there.
Do we wanna, I'm thinking we wanna get their support on an outreach program, of which a consultant is one aspect, as opposed to making it, approving for the consultant, and then everything else looks like an add-on.
That we need, we need fundamental support for this outreach, yeah, I think that's a fair point.
Sure, that's a fair point, yeah.
They approve an essential structure of outreach, to include, but not limited to, a consultant, space for open houses.
Within a budget, and within, within an expected budget of act, so that they at least have some idea that it's not limitless.
Yeah, so a couple requests, then, right, like...
Staff support on assembling information, you know, whatever, those kinds of things might be.
Does the town board support an outreach pro, you know, an outreach effort regarding, you know, issues in Northwest Superior?
Yeah, I just make the consultant part of a bigger plan, as opposed to being number one.
I think that's a, yeah.
That's, that's a good addition.
My brain would be, like, I couldn't, I couldn't even begin to try and type tonight, good job, Stephen.
Motion to town board regarding approval for outreach for subarea plan, uh, including...
I would be including, but not limited to legal, for the audience.
Yeah, Jimmy, wanna turn this into a legal e-s force?
Everyone's become an attorney now.
Throw some lead in there, that's usually effective.
Start with a whereas?
Yeah, hereby.
Was there a second component to that, besides the...
Sorry, so then, yeah, approval of the outreach effort, including the hiring of a consultant, um, and other means, to determine if, you know, further study...
To solicit community feedback.
Yeah, to solicit community feedback, yeah, we need the goal, it's true.
Yeah.
Regarding future development.
Just regarding the future.
Regarding the overall future.
Is it vision, or future, or what do you wanna say?
Yeah, vision for, yeah.
For the Northwest.
No, wait a minute, we're not going after vision here.
No vision. It's too early for vision.
We're not looking at vision, we're looking at education and feedback to figure out whether we even gonna go move forward to create a vision, right?
Vision comes after the...
Right, we're looking, we're looking to, we're looking to solicit feedback to determine whether we're gonna move forward...
Yeah.
With a more comprehensive Northwest area planning, based on community desire, feedback, and interest, right?
Yeah, so, hiring a consultant to facilitate, assist with a series of open houses and other means of community engagement, for the purpose of education and information.
For the purpose of educating, educating...
Where is this, right after subarea plan? Is this where you want it?
Yeah.
Education and...
Providing education, providing education and information, right?
Providing information.
Yeah.
I think you gotta have soliciting and soliciting feedback.
And soliciting feedback, yeah.
Yeah, providing, providing information and soliciting feedback on...
Topics of relevance to the, to the community, or something like that.
I'm wondering if we just start with motion to town board regarding approval for outreach effort for Northwest plan, period. Anticipated steps at this point in time would be, in an effort to collect feedback, would be...
Or maybe goals, collect feedback, or provide information, or...
In other words, I would just stop right after the first sentence, so that they know what the guts of where we're going is.
Yeah.
Stop right there?
I know the very first sentence.
No, he just means put a period there, so that, yeah.
After plan.
Plan, put a period.
Sorry, yeah, period, right.
And then we start...
To include, you said, or inclusive?
Including outreach effort.
Include the hiring of consultant.
Purpose of this plan is to obtain, uh, is to both provide and obtain, uh, provide information and obtain, and send soliciting feedback from the immediate community, something like that.
Maybe it's more of a paragraph with a purpose, and, uh, here's what we wanna do, here's the purpose, here's the desired outcome.
Basically why, this is basically how, and now we want your support.
Yeah.
Purpose of plan, or purpose of, because this part, it was talking about purpose of, uh...
Sorry, purpose of the outreach.
I would say, to be conducted for the purpose of providing information. And soliciting feedback.
To be what, sorry?
To be conducted. And you had some good language after feedback, what was that, soliciting?
I'm getting lost now in my drafting.
I think we need to add, add education back, we took that out.
Yeah.
Providing...
To be conducted for the purpose of providing information, education.
Yeah, I think that would be the second sentence.
I mean, we're providing information and education with the goal to solicit feedback from the community on moving forward with issues regarding the Northwest area.
Yeah, or, or really matters of import to, to the community, right?
Yeah, on matter, yeah, on matters that are important to the community, yeah.
Regarding matters of importance to our residents.
Maybe in prioritizing path forward, or something like that?
Yeah, 'cause I don't want them to think that this outreach effort will result in the final plan, maybe, that this, you know what I mean, that this...
I picked up, what's now the last sentence, is this the second sentence?
Can I read something?
So flip, second and third?
Can I read something real quick?
Sure.
So, I put, motion to the board of trustees to approve it, to approve an outreach effort to the community regarding the Northwest area plan, period. The purpose of the effort is to provide education, information to the community, and solicit feedback regarding matters that are important to the community.
Yes, that works.
Yeah.
All right, you're gonna have to read it again?
Sure, uh, motion to the town board, to, to, motion to town board to approve an outreach effort to the community regarding the Northwest area plan.
You have to, all right, motion to the town board of trustees to...
To, to approve an outreach effort to the community regarding the Northwest area plan. Or Northwest area subarea plan, yep, regarding
Okay.
The Northwest subarea plan, period. The purpose of the effort is to provide... The purpose of the effort is to provide education and information to the community.
Write this meeting down.
Yeah.
Form if I can show.
Good call.
Provide education and information?
And solicit feedback, oh, to provide, yeah, I'm sorry, to provide.
Six thirty?
Education, information to the community, and solicit feedback regarding, and this was your words, Jim, matters that are...
Matters of importance.
Matters of importance to the community. Or to our residents, are you sure? Yeah. I don't know, is that simple enough? Does that, does that...
Um, hold on.
Sure.
You want to include this consultant piece, though, too, right?
Oh, sure, yeah, let's, let's get this done, yeah, so then...
Period.
Yeah, to include the hiring of a consultant to assist with a series of, yeah, that sounds good.
Do we want to expand something, anything beyond hiring of a consultant, like, I don't know, staff support for gathering documents, putting out a...
Yeah, do we want, and do we want to say up to, you know, approve whatever he comes up with, with a dollar amount?
Yeah, and we can massage this again when we come back, but...
Once he comes up with a dollar amount, and then, yes, that could include staff time, hiring of a consultant, potentially a survey.
And maybe preparation exhibits or something, you know, that kind of stuff.
Sure.
That's where I would use it, to include the not limited to part.
Sure, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's like to be careful, because then, you know, having a dollar value helps, because then...
Yes.
No, for sure.
Then we can do other things within that dollar value.
Best estimated important time is X.
Instead of giving us a blank check, so, okay.
It's probably good for us to let them know, I don't think it needs to go in the motion or anything, but just to let them know that the concept of the consultant is to minimize bias in our presentation. We're really just trying to seek, you know, we're just trying to solicit, or solicit it, unbiased feedback.
Unless you're Bob, then you're looking for Bob.
Would the consultant be, would the consultant be the moderator?
Yeah.
I think so.
Yes, I would think so.
You want to use moderate instead of assistant?
We could use consultant slash moderator.
Yeah, but are we moderating an open house, or are we, I mean, I still imagine we, we need to be there, and town board members need to be there, and...
But you still, yeah, I mean, I think you still need kind of like someone to oversee the, you know...
Yeah, I think somebody paying attention to make sure something's not falling apart.
Some guy with a gavel that sits in the metal seat, you know?
Yeah.
Yo, you're out of here.
Two bias, get out.
I get no respect from the gavel.
We've already heard that four times. No, crash.
Okay.
To assist with, yeah. Should we say consultant slash moderator? Is that what you...
Nah, because the consultant will decide what that needs to be. I mean, I think that's if, that's getting down into the details of what they're going to do, and I think they'll tell us if it needs to be moderated, or we can suggest that once we hire them or something, but...
Yeah, okay. I think that's a good first step.
Yeah.
And Stephen will get what he thinks maybe a good rough dollar number might be to pull off three open houses.
Yeah, how many, uh...
Three, you think? Can I just say three?
Three or four or something like that?
Yeah, I think three.
Okay.
They're basically three identical ones, just to provide more opportunity for people to come, right? They're not a series of...
Yeah, if you miss the first one, you can...
Right, yeah.
And an understanding, I think, of what our purchasing policy is as far as, you know, so if we keep it, doesn't this mean we need to go through whatever, you know,[1686.24]